Good evening and welcome to the City of Dublin Planning and Zoning Commission. You can join the meeting in person at 5555 Perimeter Drive and also access the meeting via the livestream on the city's website. We welcome public participation, including public comments on cases. At this time, if you will join me by standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. Ms. Beal, would you please call roll?
Mr. Schneer.
Here.
Ms. Fox.
Here.
Ms. Call.
Here.
Mr. Grimes.
Yes.
Mr. Supelak.
Here.
Mr. Way.
Here.
Thank you, Ms. Beal. We are unaware if, I haven't heard anything from Mr. Fishman, and so if he joins us, we will welcome him to the meeting at that time. There are a couple of sets of minutes and we have documents to approve into the record. Do I have a motion to approve the documents and minutes from October 14th, November 4th, and November 16th?
No move.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Ms. Beal.
Mr. Supelak?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Ms. Call?
Yes.
Mr. Grimes?
Yes.
Mr. Way?
Yes.
Mr. Schneer?
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Beal. The Planning and Zoning Commission is an advisory board to City Council when rezoning and planning of property are under consideration. In such cases, City Council receives recommendations from the Commission. In other cases, the Commission is the final decision-making responsibility. Anyone who intends to address the Commission on any of these administrative cases must be sworn in. The agenda order is typically determined at the beginning of the meeting by the Chair. The rules and regulations of the Planning and Zoning Commission state that no new agenda items are to be introduced after 10:30 PM. There's one item eligible for the consent agenda this evening. It is Agenda Item 7, American Share Insurance. Does anyone from the Commission wish to pull this from the consent agenda? Seeing none, do I have a motion to approve consent agenda?
No move.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Ms. Beal.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Mr. Grimes?
Yes.
Mr. Supelak?
Yes.
Mr. Schneer?
Yes.
Mr. Way?
Yes.
Ms. Call?
Yes. Thank you. Anyone intending to address the Commission on any cases this evening, will you please stand and raise your right hand? And answer in the affirmative, do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony to this Commission? Thank you all. All right. New case this evening is Mount Carmel Hospital located at 3865 Bright Road. This is Case 21158 CP Concept Plan. This application is a request for an informal review and feedback for a concept plan to develop an approximately 35-acre parcel consisting of 190,000 square foot, 60-bed inpatient hospital, and ambulatory center, and a 90,000 square foot medical office. The site is zoned residential, excuse me, restricted suburban residential district and is located southwest at the intersection of Bright Road with Sawmill Road. Mr. Will.
Thank you. So this is an informal concept plan review for the proposed Mount Carmel Hospital. This plan unit development proposal is in the concept plan phase, which is the first step and would be required to come back to the Planning and Zoning Commission as well as City Council for rezoning, and then again to the Planning Commission with a final development plan. As a refresher, the intent of the concept plan is to ensure consistency with the community recommendations and specifically look at use and intensity, scale and intensity of development, general site layout, buildings, parking and open space location, architecture and landscape character, as well as internal site circulation vehicle for vehicle, bicycle, and pedestrian connectivity. The site is located northwest of the interchange of 270 and Sawmill at 365 Bright Road, highlighted here in yellow. So a key component of the community plan is future land use recommendations. The site here, again highlighted in yellow, shows the future land use recommendations for premium office institutional, as well as some parts standard office institutional and mixed residential medium density. Surrounding recommendations include a mix of neighborhood office institution, as well as suburban low-density rural residential and mixed-use urban core across 270 and the Bridge Street District. In addition to the future land uses, it also prescribes density and recommendations. The premium office institution, which makes up most of this site, is recommended at 16,500 square foot per acre. The proposal includes about 8,000 square foot per acre. Additionally, the future land use for standard office includes 12,500 square foot an acre, again proposed at 8,000, and a piece, the mixed residential medium density is five dwelling units per acre. Cumulative, the community plan would prescribe about 487,000 square feet of building space in addition to 20 dwelling units. The cumulative proposal includes 280,000 square feet per acre, or 200,000 square feet total, rather. In addition to the future land use, the thoroughfare plan has also made recommendations through the community plan. This is important because of the prominent thoroughfares Sawmill, I-270, Emerald Parkway, and Bright Road, which this site has frontage on. And in addition, the Bright Road Special Area Plan within the community plan makes specific or special design and mobility guidance. Here you can see large-scale office oriented on I-270 in A, B including two-story offices and supportive services, C showing consistent landscape treatment along the Sawmill edge. And additionally, for mobility, the Special Area Plan recommends exploring opportunities for an overpass between Emerald Parkway and the Bridge Street District, as well as continuing limited or restricted access along Sawmill and the widening of Bright Road between Emerald and Sawmill. A reminder from our last meeting, Emerald Parkway Phase 8, the last piece of Emerald Parkway was completed, which completed the premium office corridor that connected Tuttle Crossing from, to Sawmill Road. This is a key economic driver for this city and proposes to have income-producing property along it. Along with Emerald Parkway, the city conducted a Sawmill Road corridor study, which was completed in 2019. This study highlighted the need for infrastructure and improvements within the corridor. Two key elements or recommendations from that were an I-270 crossing study and the Bright Road improvement, which the city is currently studying and advancing. Additionally, with the rezoning quest for private development, the applicant is required to perform a traffic impact study, which mitigates off-site improvements to the regional street network. However, the concept plan, which we are at now, we're just looking at internal site circulation, including vehicle, pedestrian, bicycle connection. Along with the PDP and rezoning, there will be a memorial of understanding and a TIS, which will further document existing and anticipated road conditions and site impacts, including recommendations to mitigate community-wide impacts. And then again, further, an infrastructure agreement will define responsibilities of the applicant to construct improvements. Again, these are all at later stages in the process. So some case history, this came to you in November as a concept plan. Some highlights of the prior concept were 190,000 square feet, roughly 5,500 square feet per acre, and included a three-story 30-bed inpatient hospital, as well as a two-story ambulatory center and a two-story outpatient clinic. Some of the feedback from the Commission included expressing support for the proposed hospital and medical uses. And the Commission additionally encouraged the applicant to explore a wellness campus concept that integrated green spaces, physical connections to the site, and to further study building placement and orientation to better leverage the site. Additionally, the Commission expressed a desire to see a full build-out phasing approach to the site. So zooming in, the site highlighted in yellow, again to the northwest of the I-270 and Sawmill Interchange, bordered by Emerald Parkway to the west, Bright Road to the north, and Sawmill Road. The site is primarily flat field with a stand of trees in the north. Here you can see some of the existing conditions and views from Sawmill Road and Emerald Parkway as well, showing the field. So at the request of the Commission last time, the applicant has shown a proposed phase planning of this. Within the first phase of the development, again pointing back to the concept of Mount Carmel of having a healing garden, they've included a central green space. Around that green space, like in a campus, they're proposing their buildings, which include 140,000 square foot three-story 30-bed hospital and a 50,000 square foot medical office, that is three stories. The site will be, have a primary access from Emerald Parkway with a secondary emergency entrance to Sawmill Road. There will be some internal circulation to connect with an MOB patient lot and staff lot surrounding the buildings. In a future phase of the proposal, the applicant is proposing a 50,000 square foot addition to the hospital, which includes adding a fourth story to the building, as well as some additional horizontal expansion. Additionally, 40,000 square foot of medical office adding on to the existing, as well as a second satellite medical office building, and supporting 180 space parking lot. The entry drive, or emergency entry drive from Sawmill, will be connected to Emerald Parkway for a secondary access, as well as a Bright Road connection with the future phase. So at full buildout, the applicant is proposing 190,000 square feet four-story 60-bed hospital, accompanied by 90,000 square feet of medical office within two buildings, roughly 1,000 patient and staff parking spaces, healing garden, and shared use trails. So continuing the health and wellness campus, the applicant is proposing to create a type, a number of typologies of open space which connect the site, including a community wellness green to the west of the building, a gateway green to the east which reaches to Sawmill, and a green space to the north. Additionally, they provided a number of inspirational imagery to show the character of landscape and development as well. So from the Emerald Parkway, the primary entrance shown to the top left, a simple amassing model, supported by an array of inspirational imagery showing the landscape and building character. On the central greenway, which is the central healing garden west of the buildings, they're proposing healing gardens. On the Sawmill gateway, there's inspirational imagery and again showing perspective from Sawmill, which shows a green edge and trail, which creates a nice edge along Sawmill Road, and additional inspirational imagery. Along the frontage with I-270, they're proposing a amassing, which is visible from I-270, which properly leverages as the site, as this is prominent on I-270. And similarly to last time, they're proposing a modern, a mix of modern and traditional uses of brick, stone, and glass. And finally, some discussion questions for the Commission to consider. Is the Commission supportive of the proposed land uses based on the community plan and surrounding context? Does the Commission support the conceptual site layout, including building, parking, and open space locations? Is the Commission supportive of the proposed building mass and scale? And does the Commission support the conceptual architectural landscape character? And are there any other considerations by the Commission prior to this project advancing to the preliminary development step? So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions. The applicant is also here present, and they prepared a presentation which they'd like to share as well.
Before we go over to the applicant, Mr. Box, could I have you just run through again the concept plan, what the goals of a concept plan review are for the Commission's review?
Certainly. Thank you, Ms. Call. So the concept plan is required for all planned development districts, and in this case, it's coming before you because this is a complex project and the applicant wants the review of the Planning and Zoning Commission and your feedback prior to them preparing a preliminary development plan. The purpose of it is to provide input at the formative stages of design, and so that is why, if you were to go into the code and see, for example, the submission requirements for putting a concept plan in front of you, it is very general in many respects, talking about the land uses proposed, internal site circulation. You'll see more refinement if this project comes back in front of you at the preliminary development plan stage. That is the point at which traffic studies are prepared, that is the point at which detailed project phasing, more architectural materials, and actual development text are in front of you for a decision. The concept plan is all about feedback, not decision, in this context.
Thank you, Mr. Box. And just one other call out for the Commission perspective. The staff has done a very good job at outlining the items for our review, the community plan recommendations, the use and density, the scale and intensity, those sorts of items. So as we look through and look at the how, you know, the Planning and Zoning Commission concentrates mostly on how projects either come to be or don't come to be. And so as we progress through, I would challenge the Commission to have that in the forefront of your mind, you know, how would this project move forward? How does this project meet the code, or exceed the code, or not meet the code? With that, any other callouts from staff before we turn time over to the applicant? Welcome. It's nice to have you back. Please state your name and address for the record.
Good evening. I'm Jason Koma. Address is 7587 Tullimore Drive, Dublin, Ohio 43016. And I'm pretty happy I got the mic on the first try this time, too. Nice. Big start. So with that, thank you for the opportunity to address the Commission. From when we last spoke, I'd be remiss if I didn't start my remarks and acknowledge that we are unfortunately in the midst of another surge of the COVID-19 pandemic. I bring this up for a couple of reasons. First and foremost, it's a reminder that the pandemic is not over. So I would like to take the opportunity, for those in attendance watching now or later, encourage you to consider getting the vaccine, getting a booster, staying safe, and letting you know that we're here for you if you need us. And it's that last part, both with the pandemic, the surge, that's reemphasized as a healthcare provider and a hospital. Our job is to be here for members of the community with care close to home when you need us, and as a member of the community. I think as I spoke last time to this Commission, I stressed that importance that Mount Carmel takes in being a member of the community. As a quick update in regard to this project, since we last met, we've had an open and ongoing dialogue with leaders and members of the East Dublin Civic Association, have joined and look forward to taking a greater role within, in the Dublin Chamber as our presence in the community grows, and have embarked in a conversation that we hope will lead to some great partnerships, perhaps with the Dublin City Schools. I would note that we are hiring 16- and 17-year-olds right now, so it's a great way to get involved. If you know anybody who is interested in healthcare, they can learn alongside our team. I promise that, and vaccines are my only plugs tonight, so. You know, I'm joined by Diane Dusset, who is the president of this hospital, along with our design and architecture teams, who are going to run you through a little bit more detail about the updated concept plan that we have before you tonight. But I'd like to highlight with a couple of things, and note that I hope you saw, both in staff's presentation and the materials submitted, that we have incorporated feedback from this Commission in the renewed plan. Specifically, I just want to touch base on a couple of these. You know, we were asked, when we had a chance to talk to the Commission previously, about the long-term vision of the campus. And you'll see a phased approach that includes day one, immediate needs, as well as a future Phase 2 expansion. We also received feedback on site organization and purpose and building organization on the site. You'll note that we have incorporated a more serene and healing presence within the campus in this concept plan. The building is now tighter, more compact, but still has that emphasis along I-270. There was concern about the look and the view and the feel of parking. You know, I think we all know that we will need parking on this site, but our team has incorporated additional green amenities, separation of the parking zones to really reemphasize the site and de-emphasize the parking itself. We also appreciated the conversation about the eastern edge and the Sawmill entrance and the importance that that has for the city. You know, I think you'll see that we've included mounding and landscaping and an inviting composed landscape that still emphasizes the building beyond, but also has the opportunity to be a green respite site as well. Separately, we heard about the Emerald Parkway entrance and it not being as inviting as possible. The approach you'll see is softer, more park-like, emphasis is placed on the green space instead of the parking. And we had questions come to us on stormwater mitigation. You know, from a tactical standpoint, we paid a lot more attention to quantities and locations to confirm the site can maintain the total stormwater requirements. You know, those calculations, as you know, will be part of the development plan. And then, you know, lastly, we heard comments both in front of Commission and separately on traffic. You know, I would note on traffic mitigation and traffic itself, we are proposing a lower density than what the site allows, and also acknowledge that healthcare and hospital traffic is spread more evenly throughout the day than a typical business. And reminding, I think this came up from staff's presentation, so thank you again, that, you know, we are working through the traffic study and will have it submitted as part of our development plan. And as I said, my colleagues will run you through these and more changes in detail. But I think the message I want to pass to the Commission is that, you know, our last presentation before you allowed us to take a refreshed and renewed look at this site. You know, we want to provide healthcare when you need it, close to home, but have put forward a concept plan that allows us to do that in a more serene and healing setting while embracing that role as an important member of the community. It really aligns with the mission and vision that we brought forward to the Commission last time, so please allow me to restate that. You know, at Mount Carmel, we strive to be the most trusted health partner for life by being a compassionate and transforming healing presence within the communities we serve. It is our belief that this updated concept plan, with the feedback from this Commission, allows us to do a better job of fulfilling that mission here in Dublin. I will turn it over to my colleagues to walk you through a little bit more detail and, quite frankly, from a more informed view of a lot of what we've done to the site. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Koma.
Good evening. I am Mark Boltman. Address 333 East Erie Street, Milwaukee, Wisconsin. It's an honor to be in front of you all this evening. I think Chris did an excellent job setting us up, and as did Jason with some of the feedback that you all gave us last time, and I, we certainly did take it to heart. Thank you. And so I just want to talk a little bit about the organizing concept. As you look at the image in front of you, the, you challenged us to create a campus and to have a big organizational concept that pulled this all together. And so there's a few components here that I just want to address off of this. The first is this idea of creating green spaces at the access points. So at, off of Emerald Parkway, off of Sawmill, and again off Bright, you'll see that we have created green spaces that serve as the gateway to the site. You guys talk about this campus, this piece of land is the gateway to Dublin. We understand the importance of that, but there's also gateways that are happening to this site, and has a unique character about it in that it has, it's a four-sided site. You don't often get that, and so that's its own unique design challenge. So we're excited about the idea of creating those welcoming outdoor spaces at the access points to the site, at the entryways. And then we use that green ribbon that runs from east to west to tie those entry spaces, those outdoor rooms together across the east and west side of the site, and then again, as you come from the Bright Road access point down to the building itself. And in creating that organizational concept or using that green, integrated greenway to do that, it does a bunch of things for us that respond to some of the things that you talked about. So one is, it helps us break down the scale of the parking. So you look at the parking that is to the west of the building there, the green ribbon cuts through the middle of that now, so the parking becomes sort of subservient to the site and not sort of the thing that you were looking at before as you would approach the site. If you think about the experience of a patient entering off Emerald Parkway, for example, that's the line of sight that you have to the building is through this greenway that we're creating. And in addition to allowing us to break down the scale, it also, why I said that, it makes it subservient to the overall campus organization. It does the same thing on the east side. That green ribbon continues through. One of the things that we were thinking about is, you talked about Sawmill and the view of this from Sawmill, you had concerns about the parking. What the green ribbon does for us and the outdoor space along Sawmill is helps us to create sort of a view corridor to the building. So you have a place of arrival, but then this view corridor that sort of focuses on the building takes your eyes off the parking and makes that subservient to the rest of it. So really, your feedback challenged us to take it all a step further and create something that was more campus, and I think the term that we like to use around that is just hospital in a wellness setting. So this idea that it's not a hospital on a piece of land, it's a wellness setting with a hospital in it, and it's sort of a fundamental transformation for how we think about that. And then I think the other things that it does for us, lastly, and you'll see this in a moment from Brian, it provides us the opportunity to make the campus more pedestrian-friendly. As Chris mentioned in his setup, there's also, that's an important part of making this, embracing the community and making this not only a place of healing, but also a place to bring the community in. So, Brian?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm Brian Kinselman, Senior Principal with MKSK, Landscape Architect and City Planner at 462 South Ludlow, Columbus, 43215. Had to get my zip code straight. Thank you very much for having us. Just some follow-on comments to Mark, and as usual, staff has done a great job at explaining the parameters of the project. I can't emphasize enough that this green ribbon and the green reserve, as I call it, which is the collection of the entire green space and the landscapes, has really been elemental to organizing the site. It's informed where the buildings are placed, it's informed how the buildings are masked, it's informed how the buildings are formed and oriented. As Mark has suggested, there is no backside to this campus. We've got thousands of automobiles a day passing by 270. We want to announce the fact that we've got this high-quality healthcare and Dublin additive facility that's on this key corner to the city of Dublin, not lost on us. This is a key gateway corner for the city. We've all been looking at this corner for 30 years, 40 years, dare I say. And this is a great opportunity for us to not only announce the quality healthcare that Mount Carmel represents, but also that you're entering a place that is very special, and that is Dublin, Ohio, make no mistake about it. So these edges, they connect to the interior ribbon, the green ribbon, as we like to call it, but they are intentional landscapes. These are meant to be signature landscapes. The Sawmill roadside of the campus is very important to us as a campus, it's also very important to the city of Dublin. As people exit the interchange of 270, that is your first expression and impression of the city of Dublin. So that is not just mounding to disguise parking, it is meant to be an intentional landscape of earth forms, plant material, hardscape, possibly signage, but it is an announcement that you are in a pretty special place. We've got the luxury of the woodlot along the We've got the luxury of the woodlot along the Bright Road portion of the site. We look to preserve that in future phases. We may be taking a driveway through that to connect to Bright, but that will be strategically located to take advantage of the woodlot that is there. And we're very sensitive to the residents to our north, the residential neighborhoods to our north and further to the west and those that are across Sawmill Road. So we understand we've got neighbors not only that live here, but drive by here many times a day, and their experience is extremely important to us. The Emerald Parkway frontage will satisfy most of our stormwater management there, but in a sculpted fashion, again, an intentional landscape. This is not going to be a suburban expression of stormwater management, but it's part of a landscape scheme. We've got a memorable space with the ribbon, the organizing ribbon, both east and west of the buildings. Those will terminate at the building at usable public gathering spaces. So we'll have plaza spaces, connected tissue of pathways to the edges and through those green spaces, all with the necessary comfort and safety that the public expects in pedestrian and biking ways, and all at a character that is consistent with the high quality that is the signature of Dublin, Ohio. So we understand the need for proper culture of plants, the proper use of hardscape, of signage, the organization of the spaces and the comfort for the public as they pass by and use the site. So we appreciate all the comments of this commission last time around. Staff has been very, very helpful in helping us further craft this vision, and we think that we have touched the points and we've got a very, very meaningful healthcare campus here.
Thank you, Mr. Kinselman. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to address the commission on this item, who wishes to offer public comment?
So I'm sorry, one minute. I think they had a few more slides they'd like to share with you.
Apologize.
Oh, that's okay. That's okay. Just a couple more things that we wanted to address, again, in response to some of the feedback from last time. This is around placement of the building. Mentioned before about the importance of this site as gateway and the fact that it's four-sided. So as you see off of this diagram, in placing this building, we are purposely sensitive to, one, the visibility from 270 as cars are going by. Two, as folks are coming off of 270 and up the ramp, they have a line of sight directly to the building. It's sort of the terminus as you come up the ramp there. I would also add that as you come down the entryways and down those access points through the site, take Bright Road, for example, you, as you enter the site, you have line of sight to the building. It's a very important wayfinding concept, particularly in healthcare, is to be able to see your destination. So that's an important part of it. And then lastly, from a healthcare perspective, it's really important in creating a campus like this that you use the site to, as part of the wellness experience. So from the moment that you access the site, you want to create a wellness setting, and that includes what you see as you access the site, but also the experiences you drive in. You want to bring down the stress of the healthcare visit and get folks in the right state of mind as they're coming into the building to receive care. And so the placement of that is sort of at the nexus of all of those things on the campus and in concert with all of the things that we've described about effective integration with landscape and access for the community. Next, we'll just go to the phase one plan, I think. There you go. Thank you. And just to address here, as a healthcare provider, obviously, we need to prioritize our investment and maximize the service that we can deliver to patients and to our communities like Dublin. Phase one is our current understanding of our day one immediate needs. We are collaborating with the city staff about infrastructure development along Bright Road and the potential crossing that Chris mentioned earlier. And it's really important to us that, as we consider the development in phase one, that we maintain future flexibility for not only what happens on this campus for Mount Carmel, but also what may happen as the city continues to develop and as you make decisions around what you do on Bright Road and the 270 crossing. And then lastly, so then this is the full build-out over time, the full site master plan that brings all of those pieces together, the east-west connection along Service Drive, completes the access points off of Bright Road, and really makes this the full vision of this healthcare and a wellness setting that we're trying to achieve. And then lastly, you've seen these, so I don't have to spend a lot of time on this, Chris, but just the precedent imagery that we shared with you last time. We've got great feedback from city staff about what is quintessentially Dublin. Obviously, we're not from here. It's part of our job to come to know who you are and understand what that is as we create architecture. So they've been very helpful about that. And probably the simplest way that I can put it is we're going for a modern, a modern expression, but with traditional references. Don't forget who we are, who you are as the city of Dublin, and make sure that there's a nod to that in the architecture that we create. So that's hopefully reflected in the imagery that you see here. And then we also want to make sure that we select materials that are, that humanize, that are timeless, that don't go out of style shortly, and make a connection to nature. So it's important in that, as part of that, creating a great healthcare experience, views to nature, integration with nature, and incorporating that not only in the landscape, but also in the building is super important. So with that, no further comment. And thank you.
Thank you. Because this is informal, I'd like to invite anyone who has public comment to come forward, and then we will do questions and discussion at the same time as a commission. Is there anyone from the public who would like to make comments on this application? Seeing none, I will turn it over to commission for discussion and for questions. Mr. Way, do you want to start us off?
Sure, thank you. I'd love to. Firstly, I've got to say thank you to the team because you did hear us, and I think what you've brought back to us is really transformational from where it was the last meeting. There's a big idea, there's a vision, and I think that's what we were looking for in the first round. So congratulations for bringing us something that I think starts to fit in. Can we pull up any graphics? Can we pull up the Organized by Nature diagram? I love this whole idea of the integration of the open space through the site, the community wellness gate and the gateway. You've got a number of different terms there. I think that really helps to break down the site. And in our packet, there was a, we had a diagram, we had an earlier version of this that just had the nature preserve on the right side of the entry road coming in from Bright Road. And I was concerned that we were like leaving the rest of that site kind of not considered. So I'm glad that you've kind of thought about that whole northern site as a greenway coming in. And I think how the road bisects it is still something that I'd like to see explored because it looks a little lopsided right now. I think there's a way to integrate that road, similar to what you have, but maybe a little bit better. And then I was curious why you didn't finish the green zone along Emerald Parkway, but it seems like the green should just kind of be that whole frontage, the community wellness. And it just looks unfinished when in the diagram. And I just think, as you think about that frontage and, you know, stormwater management done in a very high-end way and attractive, I think that whole edge can be part of that wellness theme. And then the other thing that I still think could be explored a little bit more is that the green zone comes in from the north, how it could come down and kind of embrace the hospital? And embrace the hospital probably on the east side, maybe to the gateway space. But on the front, maybe it slides down and integrates those drop-offs and all of that. I think then you'd really start to integrate this in a very interesting way. So I think you really have taken this up another notch, and I'm really, really looking forward to seeing the further development of it. I could, I could pick this apart right now, but that's not a concept plan. But I'll have opportunity to do that. I do have two very specific questions for you. One is in the massing renderings. It actually shows a five-story building. I'm just curious, was that just a mistake or is it, is that something that's a dream?
Well, I trust, as you know, design is an iterative process, so we'll chalk that one up to a mistake.
So it is not a five-story building, it is four-story.
That's correct. Yep.
And then the other, the comment was, I actually have three comments. The loading dock, there's the main loading dock, which I understand, but it looks like there's a loading dock for the MOB, both MOBs, is that correct? It's not labeled, but it looks like there's paving back there and there's something going on.
On the future MOB, there will be a place for box trucks and such to make deliveries. It's typically, that would be less of a loading dock. Same thing with the MOB and the hospital. It's a place for deliveries, but not so much a loading dock. Subtle but important distinction.
So my comment is that, you know, every hospital has to have an edge that is where service happens. So it's obvious that your service edge is towards Sawmill, and I just want to make sure that loading docks and things like that are, you know, integrated into the site in the right way so that they don't stand out, and especially they're not visible. And the last point I will ask is the helostop, which it says helostop and not heliport, and I know there's a difference there, but in the previous plan, it was out into the site and it showed landing patterns. I don't believe you can get a helicopter that close to a hospital. Is that something that you're still exploring?
Yes. I mean, we're still pre-schematic here, but the, it, I think that's one of the details that we'll have to work through is it's that zone. Sure.
So we have consulted helicopter ambulance services with the design and with the space that they would need. And specifically, Mr. Way, it's, I joked because at one point to staff, they referred to it as a helipad, and I will use the word scream, maybe that's a little strong, but across the room, I said, "Stop!" It's a helostop, which denotes much less traffic. A helostop itself, you're looking at a couple of flights, at best a year, to take someone from the facility, not one where you would have traffic. But the design itself, we have specked out with an air ambulance pilot directly, and we'll continue that throughout the process. Sorry. And sorry about yelling "stop" again, Chris. We're on the public record now, so I have it clear.
Those are details we'll come back with. It can actually be close to that building, but we'll, we have to work the logistics of that.
And again, my comment is it's an important piece of infrastructure in a hospital. It always needs to be in a place that's accessible. It has an impact on the site, and I just, I just want to call that out. That's all I have for right now.
I did want to just, to your comment about the termination of the Bright Road greenway, we didn't do a good job of articulating this in the diagram, and I will bring that back next time that we talk, but the end of the MOB is the infusion space where cancer patients get treatment. So there's very purposeful in how it terminates there at the end of the building. We have some work to do in defining that, but there is some strategy to that that's just not well represented right now. So appreciate that you noticed it.
Thank you. And we're going to pause from commission discussion and comments. I believe we received a digital version of a public comment.
We did, sorry. We have a couple that have come in. So the first is from Kyle Rush at 4143 Macduff Way. Thanks for the information. The only comment I have is again going to be for the entrance on Bright Road. The road backs upright to the residence in Inverness. A little nature preserve is not going to help. Widening Bright Road to accommodate that entrance will only make the area worse for residents of the village and anyone else passing through as traffic will be substantially increased. The main entrances should be on Emerald Parkway away from the residence homes. If they insist on an entrance there, this may be a bit of a reach, but may be Bright Road dead ends into Sawmill. This would force people to use Hard Road and the eventual bridge crossing over 270 between Tuller and Emerald Parkway. Either way, the entrance is not a good idea. The second comment is from Melinda Todaro. She is at 7325 Macbeth Drive. I am concerned with the traffic on Bright Road between Emerald Parkway and Sawmill Road. This is an area where, that experiences congestion. Pre-pandemic, the 5 o'clock traffic would back up to the traffic circle. Is a plan being developed to deal with the traffic in that corridor? And then lastly, Gina Bray. As a local resident who travels Emerald Parkway frequently, I have many concerns with the proposed Mount Carmel campus plan, primarily with traffic congestion impacting Sawmill. Sawmill at 270 and Sawmill at Hard are consistently congested, causing multiple collisions per week. Dublin also encourages the support of nature and conservation. I fail to see how, in addition to another large-scale industry, falls within the long-term vision of protecting our environment. Secondly, there is a freestanding hospital less than seven minutes away in a freestanding emergency room in Powell off Sawmill Parkway north of this proposed hospital. Not to mention the recent construction and opening of the rehab hospital off Sawmill in Dublin. Mount Carmel currently has a Hilliard campus and a campus off 23 in Delaware. To expand to Dublin seems unnecessary in an already well-saturated market offering emergent outpatient and long-term medical care. Lastly, I would like to see a community survey distributed to local residents asking if they support the proposed hospital campus. Concretely verifying in need would show the board if construction would be serving our Dublin community.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Roush. With that, we'll go back to commission discussion. Mr. Grimes.
Thank you. Well, I have to say that this, this plan is a far better fit and orientation and use of the property than the prior plan, so I certainly congratulate you as well on that. Green space, stormwater, I think that's great, but as mentioned in the comments, and everybody's aware is that traffic and access and, I don't know if it's the proper way to say it, but using this project to help leverage improvements for everybody in the area. It's a win-win for everybody if we can address the issues on Sawmill and mitigate whatever it may take to get the traffic in and out of this facility. Interesting comment about possibly closing the Bright Road to Sawmill. I think I've heard that somewhere before, but I defer to engineering and other studies to say whether that is something that's good or not good to do and benefits everybody in the area. Certainly, Sawmill and 270 is not going to get less busy. That's not going to happen as more development goes on to the north into Delaware. So I would just urge everyone to look at that traffic, not only within the secondary streets, but on the main as well. And again, I like the way the building sits and the orientation and the green space. I think that, that's a very nice way to look at this property, so thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Grimes. I'm going to switch it up a little bit and go Mr. Schneer, if you wouldn't mind.
Certainly. A couple of questions, comments. First of all, I appreciate everyone's effort at Mount Carmel to incorporate our comments. I think we're all saying it's, it's just a far better plan. I had a question. Have the intended uses changed at all? Because in the previous one, there was, they were called out a little differently, ambulatory care, whatever. So has there been any changes in the expected uses?
No changes. It's really just the evolution of the building organization that has consolidated some of that.
Thank you. And one question, and if I'm, if I'm reading this correctly, I think it's the staff parking, but for the hospital, approximately 480 parking spaces would be required, 571 are provided. What would be the reason to have more parking spaces?
I answered the question previously about design is an iterative process. Same here. In fact, we were looking in the last week or two at scaling back parking to minimize the amount of impervious surface we're creating and right-size that parking for phase one. So I would expect that that will evolve, the quantities, as we come back next time.
When it comes to green space, more is more, and when it comes to parking, less is better.
Agreed.
And then it was just one observation, and it's early in this process, but, and it's not up here, but there was one diagram that showed arrows sort of going in, going into one part of the hospital, but not coming out the other side. And just would seem that this sort of lobby area would be a great way to continue so that you could actually continue on through, you know, through the hospital. I'm sure you were anticipating glass or something, but it just looked like it was sort of an abrupt stop. It looked very attractive from one, and the other side, you know, it really was sort of the backside, sort of the east, the eastern portion of that.
I apologize. I'm not quite following.
There's a slide there that had, had some arrows. Well, that'll give you, it wasn't this slide, but it showed- Well, that'll give you, it wasn't this slide, but it showed the pedestrian sort of access, everything going in. You know, that's, you know, see, it loops that way, but then sort of the east side is sort of forgotten seemingly.
Yeah, part of the thinking around that is the, Brian talked about the creation of a plaza at the terminus of the Green Ribbon on the west side of campus. So near the building, that sort of gathering space for community as the hospital invites them in. On the other side of that hinge between the two buildings, we were imagining that we would create a respite space for staff. As COVID has reinforced for all of us in the design business associated with healthcare, the importance of respite space for staff. So that was the idea, was sort of the separation of being able to create that great experience for staff and bring public into the site, but keep those two things separate.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schneer. Ms. Fox, would you like to go next?
I'm really impressed. I think you, you heard what we were saying. I, I really appreciate you going back and taking a look at how you can, you know, firm up some of the, some of the, I think the motivation to, to create a wellness campus, not just a wellness building. And I think that that's really important. I think you were very thoughtful about the approach from the streetscape, but most importantly, you were very thoughtful to me in these greenways and the approach to the, to the buildings themselves. I, I did some nursing at Mount Carmel, and I can recall the gardens in front of the old convent that were places that people went to. And I believe that healing is spiritual. It's, it has so many elements. It has the medical element and the help of the doctors and nurses that help you. It has the faith element, but it also has the element of nature and openness and the serenity of light and water and, and green spaces. And people are afraid when they come into a hospital. My father always said, when you go in a hospital, you never come out. And I think there are a lot of people who feel that way. And I think that your approach to this green campus, this campus of feeling good as you approach it, just helps people feel good about their wellness and the care that they get. And, and that's why I think we were so careful about helping you understand where we were coming from. Coming through COVID here recently, our arts council found that just going out in the community and offering art helped people feel better. And if the simple act of art can do it, that, and in nature, then your ability to bring this campus into a place of space, not only inside but outside for wellness, will make your facility 500% better than anybody else's facility. And I think that we've, I hope we've done you a favor in helping you understand why we feel that way. It's so important. I agree with Mr. Way that it would be nice to be able to just kind of finish wrapping it around. So the whole piece is, is hugged by that green space. No matter where you are, you'll sense it, you'll see it, even if you can't go out to it, you can appreciate it visually. I heard you say that the staff encouraged you about traditional architecture. I would tell you that we do here in Dublin believe in natural materials, but I also think that I wouldn't want to see you be confined and not feel fresh in using curvilinear spaces, light spaces, reflective spaces. Have some fun with your architecture. Don't look at the other buildings and say, I have to do that. Why do that? You know, you're doing something unique here. So I would be very open to that. The opportunity for public art is, is something that you might think about here. And then the inspirational uses that you have shown and, and the connectivity of it all, I think what will be interesting here is that if you didn't have to go to the hospital for treatment, if your campus and you use the inspirational images that you showed for people just to take the walk, would be a wellness touch on its own. So I hope that you utilize those inspirational images to create the outdoors of the campus so that you want to go there because it makes you feel well just by being on those spaces. So I am excited to see what you come forward with, and, and I think you've been very thoughtful about protecting the residents. I know we'll figure out the traffic. I'm not worried about that. Anything that we put our mind to here in the city, we can do. So thank you very much for all the work you put into it.
That just deserves a thank you. I appreciate the feedback.
Pardon?
Just thank you. I appreciate the feedback.
Thank you, Ms. Fox. Mr. Suplack.
So I didn't get to see this last go around, and I concur with all of my fellow commissioners remarkably better than, than the previous campus, the previous, previous layout. This connects to the tissue of the city far more, far more impressively. The thoughts around the greenways sort of ebbing and flowing into, in and out of the building is, are a nice touch. I concur with Ms. Fox, I think Mr. Way, I'm not sure who else, right? Obviously, these greenways at present are blobs that are laid over a drawing plan, right? So they, they are nebulous in and of themselves, but they demonstrate where you're trying to go. And of course, that also suggests that the blobs can expand and contract and, and ebb and flow around the building. And, and I think everybody's saying the same thing. Don't give up on that. We wholly recognize you guys are building a hospital. We, we are continuing to build a city. And those things and coming in and out of the, a site like this are, have, have profound effects on the rest of the fabric, right? So if they connect all the way around the building on that north side, right? And if that's a natural and easy way to get around things, it will be, it will be used and leveraged and enjoyed. I will generally say, so I concur with Jane also on the architecture. You have, the palette of materials, very agreeable. Where I'm going is you have in some of your, some of your imagery, you have some things that are not average. I would, I would encourage us to go that way, right? There, so many times, we've seen plenty of hospitals and we know them in this town, where their ground floor up to eight stories and they're just a glass curtain wall, right? And they just, it's fine, but they can be so much better. And you have, I'm even going to, I think it's slide, slide 15, Interstate Experience, you have some really compelling architecture, sort of the bottom one in particular. I think there was a, I got a different, a different slide with a glass thing, sort of cantilevered out as well, right? Point is, point is, there's, there's opportunity to do some really fun, compelling architecture. I, I think you, you and your designers would embrace that opportunity. I think there's also opportunity to, how about this? Along the lines of, there are some things that are not average. I feel like on the campus slide, which might be the last slide, there's even, to Jane's point, art pieces, installations, you have some sort of light tendrils sticking up there on the, on one of the imagery, images, right? And it's, it's just a very different approach that potentially allows you to do some things that people don't just walk by, that people remember, that people, that becomes, becomes artistic follies, that become elements that, that people linger at a little bit differently than, than they might otherwise. So I'd continue, I'd encourage us all to sort of continue down that path and really make this great. Thank you.
And I'll tie us up this evening. First checking, making sure no additional comments have been received. Fantastic, thank you. I also appreciate, as the Planning and Zoning Commission, we live in details. So we spend our days looking for those Ts that are uncrossed and those Is that are undotted. And sometimes we, we find it hard to separate ourselves from that mentality. And so we appreciate your patience and the effort that you've put in and bringing it back a little bit more detail than you would typically provide in, in a concept plan. You heard appreciation from a number of the, the commission members talking about some of the things that kind of geek us out. The light tendrils is, is the most recent one that you heard. Those types of things make it so that we, but more than we, we represent a community and we welcome you as part of that community, but we appreciate those items. We stop and appreciate them. We appreciate them when they're on paper, and we certainly appreciate them when they're built in the city. So we would encourage you to continue to bring forward those types of ideas. And I, I think you've heard the challenges this evening to make sure that everything that comes together in the future iterations of this plan, focus on those items. You also heard some concerns. There are some concerns, especially from the residents for transportation. But again, at concept plan, you know, we're looking at the community recommendations, the community plan. We're looking at the use. We're looking for the, the traffic and making sure that within the parcel, we can mitigate that traffic and maintain that flow. We're looking at the mass, we're looking at the density, the intensity. And I think what you've heard from the commission, if I can speak for the rest of the commission, is we're going the right direction. That we look forward to having Mount Carmel as a part of our community, and we know that together with staff, with the commission, with city council, and with yourselves, that we can build something that we're proud of. So thank you very much for your feedback, for your coming back before us this evening. And we certainly appreciate and welcome you as part of the community. Staff, is there anything further that you'd like? And then I'll turn some time back over to the applicant commission. Any other comments? Would you like to make any final statements?
Just a thank you for all of the great feedback when last we met, again, this evening. And then a thank you to city staff, Nicole, Chris, and Jennifer and others who have collaborated with us each week leading up to today. So thanks all.
Thank you very much. All right. Yes, Mr. Way.
Are we going to go through the questions or are we just going to conclude with what we've already stated?
So it's, it's concept plan. So we did commission questions and discussion at the same time. Was there something that you would like?
Didn't want to interrupt the flow. So I just wanted to make one more comment. I didn't, I didn't make any comment about the architecture or landscape character that was included in the packet, which I agree, there's some really great imagery there to build on. I do want to say, make a comment about what Mr. Kinselman said about the importance of this site to the city of Dublin. It's a gateway, that this architecture is going to be seen by everybody, and it's got to be really, really, really good. And I know you guys can deliver it, but we're really excited, I think, to, to see it evolve. And as I think everybody said, this is a partnership. We're moving down the road. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Way, and thank you all.
Second on the architecture.
Thank you all for joining us with us, with us this evening. All right. We are looking now at 4,000 West Dublin-Granville Road, case 21-128 CP, concept plan. This application is a request for a review of a concept plan for the construction of an approximately 6,900 square foot, one story, multi-tenant commercial building. This 1.98 acre site is Zoned Bridge Street District, Sawmill Centre neighbourhood and is located approximately 500 feet northwest of the intersection of West Dublin-Granville Road with Dublin Centre Drive. Welcome, Mr. Henshaw.
Thank you very much. All right, well, good evening. Before you tonight is a concept plan for 4,000 West Dublin-Granville Road. This concept plan does differ from the Mount Carmel concept plan, which you had just seen. Because this is in the Bridge Street District, concept plans do require determination by the board tonight, whereas with the previous concept plan, it operates more as an informal review. So what we're looking to do tonight is outline the character and nature of the proposed development, including building massing, open space locations, building form and street networks. So this is really to lay the foundation as we move forward towards a potential preliminary and final development plan. Should this application be approved tonight, the applicant is requesting the combination of the preliminary and final development plan, which is within the purview of the commission. So as stated, this is the second time that this application has come before you. So I would touch on, on many of the recurring themes that we had touched on before. So this site is highlighted in yellow on the screen. It is 1.98 acres in size and is located in the Sawmill Centre neighbourhood zoning district. It is currently vacant and has a number of mature trees along the western property line. There is a low lying entry feature, decorative wall and sign that is located in the southeast corner. The sign would remain as it is operable for the Lowe's parcel to the north. As this is a Lowe's out parcel, similar to the Mella Mushroom, former Mella Mushroom site to the east of the site, it does have its own set of deed restrictions, which are private agreements between property owners and tenants. The city does not enforce or consider deed restrictions with review of their applications. So tonight, we would really be looking, our staff would be presenting from the, the case of zoning requirements. Those deed restrictions do include restrictions towards height, size, and use of any development in the future of the site. Shown in yellow is a 50-foot AUP electric easement, which is located along the west property line. Additionally, the current proposal does include the future development of Village Parkway, which is highlighted in green on your screen, which is considered a district connector and principal front and street in the Bridge Street network map, but is not included with the construction of the site. So should this application move forward, the applicant would be required to continue to work with staff to finalize the implementation and construction of the street extension. And as to your reference, shown on the screen is existing conditions or are existing conditions as viewed from the southeast corner of the site, which can be viewed from West Dublin-Granville Road. As stated, this is located within the Sawmill Centre neighbourhood. This is a special district within the Bridge Street District. The star on the screen indicates where the site is located within this neighbourhood. So the Bridge Street code, district code does establish neighbourhood districts where special attention to location and character of buildings, streets and open spaces is important to establish, establish the fabric of this, of this neighbourhood. The objectives of this neighbourhood are listed on the screen. It does promote active mixed use of buildings that are pedestrian oriented and connect future and existing streetscapes. It also, these developments are required or should provide well-defined pedestrian access both within the site and to surrounding sites. There are additional requirements which are shown on the image on the screen. Those includes items such as shopping corridors, open space corridors, and where certain building types would be permitted. This site is not required to provide any gateway, open space, or shopping corridor designation. Additionally, it does not consider a commercial building type on this site. It is permitted along some areas within this district, along Sawmill Road and Bridge Park Avenue, but not here. And really briefly, this site is located at the intersection of the future Village Parkway and the current West Dublin-Granville Road. These are both principal front streets. Additionally, to the north and east are currently private drives. Banker Drive is to the north and then an access drive to the east. These are designated as potential neighbourhood streets, but would not be improved with this development. So we will be touching on three separate items with this proposal. So the applicant is proposing a 6,830 square foot, multi-tenant commercial building. Additional to this, the applicant is proposing a quick serve, drive-through accessory use to a restaurant or eating, drinking use. And they are proposing a loft building type. And we will get into more details with all of these three items. So this case was before the planning and zoning commission on October 7th for concept plan. It was tabled at that meeting by the applicant. Shown on the screen is the, is the site plan that was presented that night, just to give you some perspective. Shown on the screen are some of the concerns that were discussed by the commission and voiced by you also. These two items kind of encapsulate everything that, that was changed with the new site plan. So whether the drive-through impedes pedestrian oriented development, and then checking the appropriateness of a commercial centre building type. So shown on the screen is the proposed site plan. You'll be able to see all the updates that are listed on the, the right side of this slide. So this is a 6,830 square foot building with a single vehicular access point to the north. To touch on the updates that are being proposed here, you'll see highlighted on the screen, the applicant has provided sidewalks, both around the perimeter of the site and also through the centre of the site. The applicant has modified the building siding, so they have separated building, or tenants B and C, which are the two rightmost tenants, to provide a, a tunnel or walkthrough, which does connect to the pedestrian paths to the centre of the site. This also is, brings the building closer to West Dublin-Granville Road and meets more of the required build zone. The applicant has also added two additional The applicant has also added two additional open space nodes, both at the center and the northeast corners of the site. The three open space equal approximately 1,700 square feet in size between the three. The modifications also include a larger landscape buffer along the east property line to screen the proposed drive-through. And finally, there are a number of parking lot reconfigurations. They did reduce two parking spaces, and this was to accommodate the additional open space nodes, as well as the landscape buffer. While the applicant has incorporated the changes shown to accommodate the concerns of the commission, staff still continues to have concerns that the drive-through would be able to meet the conditional use criteria, should it move forward to the preliminary development plan stage. Just to explain briefly, the Bridge Street District was created to encourage and develop well-defined pedestrian-oriented development that is distinct from the typical auto-oriented development in other areas of the city. Auto-oriented development affects the intent for the layout of sites and negatively impacts the access to and safety of pedestrian facilities. Drive-throughs are generally not encouraged based on the items previously discussed and have only been granted in the Bridge Street District for banks. Staff, similar to the previous proposal, is not supportive of the proposed accessory use and recommends disapproval of the drive-through tonight. The applicant is proposing a loft building type, which some of those requirements are shown on the screen. However, similar to the previous iteration, it does resemble more of a commercial center building type, which is not a permitted building type at this location. So, commercial center buildings are designated to areas along Sawmill Road and Bridge Park Avenue, as depicted in the neighborhood standards. The commission should consider whether the proposed development character of this application would set a precedent for future applications along West Dublin-Granville Road. Should this application move forward to a preliminary development plan, staff would recommend that the applicant pursue a loft building type instead of a commercial center building type to maintain the development intent of this corridor. The applicant has also made some updates to the form of the building. They've added three building entrances to the front to make the building more accessible to the streetscape. And they've also reduced very slightly the height of one of the parapets. So, shown on the screen are proposed renderings from the southwest perspective and the north perspective. So, from West Dublin-Granville Road and the parking lot to the rear, the proposed architecture is contemporary with parapet roof lines on a single-story building. You can also see the updated building orientation towards the streetscape and a selection of wood, brick, and metal materials used on the conceptual drawings. And the inspiration of the building and the open spaces are provided on the screen. You can see a variety of the same materials that are proposed on those renderings. Again, with the preliminary development plan, the applicant would be required to provide a full analysis of what they are meeting and what they are not meeting with this building type. So, with that, staff has reviewed this application to all the applicable concept plan review criteria and are recommending disapproval based on the findings below and the findings that were presented earlier. And with that, with us recommending disapproval, also recommending disapproval of the combination of a preliminary development plan and final development plan. With that, I am happy to answer any question the commission may have. Otherwise, our applicant is here to address any comments and concerns. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Henshaw. Let's do questions for staff first. Does anyone have any questions for staff on this application? Seeing none? Do we have the applicant? Welcome.
Hello, Nelson Yoder Crawford-Hoey Development Partners.
If you could turn your microphone on.
Sorry. Sorry, I saw you do this.
Is it on now? Okay, thank you. Nelson Yoder Crawford-Hoey Development Partners at 6640 Riverside Drive, Dublin, Ohio. And thank you, staff, for the very thorough report that showed a lot of what we did since we were last time. We came in front of you last time with iteration, I think, number four or five for this particular very challenging site. The biggest issues being the deed restrictions that predate the Bridge Street Code by a good 10 years or so, that limit the ability to do a bank on this site. You're not allowed to do a bank. You have to do a shorter building. You have to have a certain amount of parking that we have shown. Many other uses are limited. We explained that in some depth at the last meeting. So, this is a very uniquely positioned site in that it is really not, whatever we decide tonight, I just want to say that we're not necessarily setting precedent unless there are lots of other properties along 161 that have pre-Bridge Street District Code deed restrictions on them. And to our knowledge, there's only one other one that was put in place at the same time. I'll iterate too, that we've approached Lowe's to try to get them to drop the deed restrictions. They refused to even entertain the idea. We have also approached Fifth Third Bank to drop a deed restriction that they added to the site before they sold it to Lowe's, saying no additional banks, no banks allowed on this property. And they also refused to drop that deed restriction. So, you know, at every turn, it's a tough one. So, it's a site that's important on 161, but we can't build any more than 7,000 square feet, and we're at 6,800 square feet. Really can't practically build more than one story as well. And if you look at this compared to the site next door that we were in front of Planning Commission with last week, or last month, where these deed restrictions are not in place, we are building a two-story medical office building with ground floor retail that checks all the typical boxes. So, this, if anything, hopefully that demonstrates the fact that we're not going out of our way to build something that is a square peg in a round hole. In this case, our hands are truly just tied. And we are trying to do everything we can to make a project that is additive to the Bridge Street District and meets a lot of the concerns we heard last time. We love a challenge. So, I think last time we met with you, there were a lot of things wrong with the plan that we showed you, that I think did meet the description of a typical automotive-oriented development with rear-facing parking, without pedestrian facilities really being at the center of the project. So, we went back and really rethought this. Let's put pedestrian as king. How can we make this project really interface at all corners with pedestrian facilities? I think we're double or triple the required open space for pedestrians. And how can we make this a Dublin project that meets the requirements, as many of the requirements of the Bridge Street Code as we possibly can, given the deed restrictions that none of us can change, and that unfortunately trump the zoning code, they trump our ability to work around them. So, we've done our best. I can have Chris Myers, our architect, here as well, talk maybe a little bit about the architecture in terms of how we've tried to open it up and address the street and address the pedestrian. But primarily, we took, our main goals were try to buffer and isolate the impact of the drive-through from the pedestrian as much as possible, create pedestrian connectivity through the site that doesn't exist today, and try to make lemonade out of the lemons that we were given on this site. Chris, do you want to add anything?
Good evening, everyone. I'm Chris Myers with Myers &amp; Associates Architects, 232 North Third Street, Columbus, 43215. Thank you, staff, again, for a very thorough report. As a design professional, it sort of gives us a bit of a checklist of the problems to solve. On this one, there's some that appear a bit unsolvable. These deed restrictions are certainly, you know, tying the hands of some of the opportunities to get something that right fits into the property, but also accomplishes the objectives of the community. What it essentially comes down to, when you see that list of criteria not met so many different times, it's really, I think, two factors, is what is the building type that we can work towards and try to create the best fit within the code? And the second key aspect is the drive-through. So, when we met last in October, it was beginning of October, I think on the 7th, we took your feedback and your comments, and I think in the staff report, they outlined a number of those things that we were able to incorporate into the design while still respecting the deed restrictions and trying to find kind of the best solution that's out there. One thing in particular that came to this drive-through was the sort of dialogue we had about really, what can we do to make this the sort of best drive-through in an area that might not really allow a drive-through? So, we had these kind of four points. And the certain aspect to it is to enhance some of the existing landscape condition. Staff showed some of the imagery of some existing very mature evergreen trees on the southeast corner of the property. And in our landscape concept plan, you'll see that we've taken that, utilized that, but also saturated that area with more and more landscaping. One of the primary concerns that we've had throughout the project is this overlapping of vehicle traffic and pedestrian traffic. In a site plan where we're trying to, you know, greatly encourage pedestrian access, and you saw we have new sort of walkpaths going north-south, we have a lot more penetration through the building. So, we're trying to really encourage this connectivity to these pedestrian open spaces. We thought, let's maybe isolate this drive area off to the east side of the property, add some more significant landscape medians and buffer to really create some distinction of how the vehicle could enter. One of the diagrams that staff shared with you is we have some requirement of just under 200 square feet of open public space per the code. The calculation they're showing is about 1,600 square feet of what we're providing. And if you see that diagram, if we can go to that, it's, in my mind, it's really just a fraction of what it really is. Because we also have all of these connected areas. We have these outdoor patios and spaces for a restaurant on one end and a coffee shop on the other. So, to mitigate some of the impact of this drive-through, our thought was, how do we maximize the output of some of these pedestrian open spaces and really create a bit of a destination on this location of West Dublin Grand View, which is a series of mostly office and commercial buildings? The last thing that we wanted to really think about was, how can we do a drive-through that doesn't really look like a drive-through? If you go up and down Sawmill, you'll see every example of every restaurant type and every drive-through you can imagine, and it's a box with a window stuck onto the side of the building. And so, one of the things we looked at and one of our views is, on that north elevation is the facade has a series of open glass storefront that really wraps that pedestrian walkway between the buildings as well. And so, we've taken, there's a window system that you can utilize that is a passage window within a storefront. So, rather than a blank wall with a menu board and a bike box on it, what we've done, and you can see it on the lower left at the car, that's a full-height window system that has continuity to what the rest of the building architecture has. So, to be fairly discreet about how we have access to that. One of the things we're seeing in the food and beverage industry after these last two years is people have a different way of getting something to drink or getting a meal. The percentage of food that people are acquiring through delivery services, or they have some sensitivity and they'd rather just pick it up at a transaction space rather than go fully into restaurants. And within a lot of the restaurant clients that we work with, there's been this overwhelming transformation of rethinking how people interact with restaurants, and in many cases, in a very quick method. You know, this is intended to be a fairly high-end coffee space, but this access isn't just for people driving through quickly to pick up a coffee. It's also for people who have some sensitivity to not necessarily want to go through the process that we're so used to of coming into a restaurant, going to a counter, placing an order, and waiting. So, it's something that we're seeing happen more and more often in communities like Dublin that have a very elevated standard of how do you address these sort of things in architecture in an appropriate way. The one challenge with this building type, though, this is one we're struggling with. In the initial conversations with staff when the project started, the guidance was go to a loft building. And we certainly agree with that because there really isn't a perfect fit of, you know, what this could be within the deed restrictions and what might be allowed on this property. So, hopefully, we're taking the right direction. We recognize there's a number of variances or requests to a loft change that we would certainly have to do our best to allow to occur. But that's the direction that I think we've thought is maybe the best approach for the community. So, we're seeking your feedback again. We realized two months ago that feedback was exceptionally useful, and I think, I hope you see on the plans that all those comments were paid attention to. But the challenges we have are building type and can we work together to figure out how to successfully make a drive-through work?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Looking to the question, four questions for the applicant at this point in time. Mr. Way.
I just, I have a crazy question. Have you considered putting in a one-level parking deck behind the building and almost doubling the parking? And would that get your numbers up to where they need to be to make it work?
One of the deed restrictions is actually a parking limit. It's within the standards of what we're at, but I don't think we could go too much higher in the restriction.
Just the square footage.
And the square footage.
So, oh, so, a parking deck wouldn't be allowed because it's too much parking on the site?
Yeah.
So, the site is limited to 7,000 square feet under the deed restrictions.
Got it.
So, of total developed area. So, even if we would build a parking garage to add more parking, we couldn't add more building to support the parking.
Thank you.
We could just have a parking garage and no building. 7,000 square feet.
Mr. Schneer.
Trying to maximize in an area that's hard to maximize pedestrian access, have you given any thought to a walk-up window as well as the drive-through?
We have. And I think the strategy for how this, you know, facade treatment rather than a protruding box, it's a tricky detail because of how a vehicle could gain access to it, but it's built off of the concept of it's a pedestrian walk-up. We also think that on the south or the southeast, and it's hard to see in the rendering, that that has the sort of encouragement for someone to have a walk-up area as well facing where the public open space is. So, again, another sort of destination point on the building to attract people to walk or take a bike.
Ms. Fox.
Yes, I have a question. Remind me now about, I know you have 7,000 square foot. That's all you can, that's all you can do. Height-wise, are you limited on the height of your ceiling?
Yeah, they had a, in the deed restriction, I think it's 28 feet.
To the top.
To the top. And I think we're hovering right now in the drawing probably about 20. And there's probably some room if we wanted to bump up a little bit. But the two-story notion of the loft building requirement, when we studied, how do you kind of fake a two-story facade and under 28 feet proportionately? And it seemed odd. And so, what we've done is we've kind of hovered around the massing concept of let's have kind of three distinct smaller-scale buildings that are maybe a little more proportionately scaled. Last, our meeting two months ago, we also talked about there might be a sort of a centerpiece that maybe pops up to the 28 feet. And that's certainly something that, you know, could be considered. One of the things that will further develop as the concept grows is, as we start to strategize some of the interior components of especially the restaurant side, is some of the need for mechanical units and exhaust and things, and actually how we can cloak those things with form on the roof of the building to give it a little more height, but also to minimize the visibility of any of those mechanical systems.
Okay, that sounds good. The other question I had for you is I think you're at, your building is at zero. Like, are you right up to the property line on the front edge?
There's, let me bring that up.
And the reason I, that I ask that, I know you've got some space, and I know that in the Bridge Street, it's five foot. But we're learning over and over again that we never really have enough
Yeah.
...space in the front. And I'm all about the variance because you're not on, you're on a thoroughfare.
Yeah.
And I sit in front of Starbucks, and I can smell the diesel oil as the trucks pass by. And I think that, you know, for me, I'd like to, yeah, push it back just a little bit, just so that we get.
That rendering, sorry to interrupt. Can you go to the rendering from the view? I think it depicts better than the site plan. You had that comment, we were here for two projects last time, and we had that same discussion on this one and the building next door, which we're also on. And this building has been set back, but also, we've taken the facade and manipulated it. And when we split it apart at the passage, the coffee shop, the east portion of the building is pushed back and
Okay.
...open. Again, to create a better distinction of that transition space between, you know, road sidewalk, open public space, and then building. So, we've made some of those.
How much were you able to bring it back? And because it's hard to tell on here, and all of us have sat on a busy thoroughfare and felt that it was not And felt that it was not easy to have a conversation.
Yeah.
You smell the tire rubber, you know what I'm saying?
I have a, I have a better rendering than what's being shown. I don't know if it's in your packet. More from the air, looking down on that. It's about 15 feet, in some cases, a little bit more, just based on, yeah, based on some of those changes.
Okay.
So you can see how, you know, the activation of the west side with the patio and how that buffers around and incorporates some of the extension to the walkable sidewalk. There is the sort of defined-by-code public space, which is that green and paved area in the middle, but then to the right of that, that's the area where we said, let's really create more of a depth to that transition space and give a three-quarter view of the coffee shop.
Okay.
So it, to us, it allows the coffee shop to read as a bit of an independent building.
I'll just, that's a longer thing, too.
Yeah.
So you having a tree lawn through there is something that doesn't exist at Starbucks, which is a huge benefit as well. There, you've got a couple pots between you and the diesel, right?
It's so close.
But the, as far as the height comment goes, one thing I wanted to mention is that because we're limited to 7,000 square feet and that, and that height, it doesn't matter. If we go, if we add space to the second floor, the building has to get shorter.
Sure.
Right, which means that we lose the lining of the street, which I think really helps add to the walkability as we start juggling options.
Yeah.
Okay.
We had a similar, we designed the Penn Zone building, and that's a loft building. It actually does have a second floor in it, it's a mechanical room, but the height and the variation and the volume of the building, the compact nature of that was much different proportionally than what we have here. One last point about diesel fumes is, there's another view where you can kind of see it here, there's these screen walls that are sort of seated shoulder height on two areas of the patio, the coffee shop, to really help wrap the building, but also to give the sense of you're at the coffee shop, not sitting in next to the road.
Thank you. Other questions? All right. I didn't see anyone on the sign-up sheet to speak to this particular application. Is there anyone who would desire to make a public comment? Seeing none, we will move into deliberation. Let's do, Mr. Grimes, would you like to start us off this evening?
Thank you. I really appreciate a lot of the thought that's gone in to try to make this work with so many restrictions that you've had, you know, the patios, the way the building's laid out, you know, the pathways, all that, very, very nice changes. However, at the end, you're still in conflict with so much between deed restrictions and what the Bridge Street development code is expecting. I think it's just too far for me. It's just too far. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Grimes. Mr. Suplack?
I'm actually going to go the other way. I think you guys have done a good job in a hard, in a hard situation. I think right now you are doing a lot to cultivate the pedestrian experience along that, that, along 161, right? Some of the moves you've made, right, adding sort of that, I'm going to say, the primary walkway from the, from the north side into the site, nice. I actually think you need to add something attaching to the left side, to the west side of the site. You don't really, your building doesn't make it out to that side of the street at all, aside from the restaurant plaza that's there. The increased buffer, it helps. The drive aisle becomes less of a problem. I could get on board with what you're doing, right? There's pedestrian circulation all around this. You're getting to the site, you don't, you don't have, you don't have a whole lot of barriers anymore, is what it comes down to. The passage through the building is nice. I do still think that the building is very horizontal, very flat, very single, single heighted. I know you wander, you're at 20 feet, and you wander sort of two feet up, two feet down, but I think some portion of it, and I would, I would think actually, you went towards the center portion popping up and being substantial. I was actually going towards, do you do it more at the bookends and let the center portion be a little bit down and solve it, not wholly unlike what you did at Penn Zone, right? Even if you're sort of faking, faking that second story, but for the restaurant or the coffee shop, that's not disagreeable space either, disagreeable experience. So I'm generally, I'll say this, I'm generally on board. That doesn't, I'm uncomfortable with, and I don't know how it, we get to it, but I'm uncomfortable with doing both approvals potentially together if it comes to that, so we'll need, we might need guidance on that. I would want to stipulate some conditions about height adjustments in particular of note.
Thank you, Mr. Suplack. Mr. Schnir.
I'm in favor of it. I think you've done a great job with all the issues that you were presented with. I'm not bothered, I like, I echo your comments on drive-throughs. I mean, we, I think it's dogmatic for us to be the, we're going to say, we all don't like drive-throughs, so we're going to be the community that doesn't have drive-throughs when the world is changing. And if that's our approach, you know, we'll have, we're basically telling people, you want to go to, you know, you want to go to a restaurant, go somewhere other than Dublin because we don't like drive-throughs in Dublin. It's, it worked at a time, but times change, and I think that we should change with those times. And I think you did a good job in trying to screen that. I'm also the, I'm just not bound by, you know, in these circumstances, but by the code, given the circumstances, I'm not an architect. I would like to see if there's anything you can do to those building heights, just to give some variation, but otherwise, I support it.
Thank you, Mr. Schnir. Ms. Fox.
You know, I really appreciate the fact that you came back really thinking about how you can tackle this monster you've got, you've got a deed restriction monster. I think that we have an intention here of having a pedestrian-friendly streetscape. That's what we're going for. And we've created code around it to try to accomplish that, and in some cases, that code works for us, and in some cases, that code doesn't work for us. And in this case, the code is hurting us because we're going to end up with nothing but a blank space there. So then you have to tackle it, and I think that we have to open our heads up to some hybridization here of how we can have that wonderful friendly streetscape on a thoroughfare and encourage people to go to it. And I think that you're starting to get there. I don't think you're totally there yet. It reads to me still like a commercial building all across the front because materially, that's what it looks like. I believe that we need to pop up some height here. Your inspirational images show a variety of different kind of looks, and I think if I look at an urban streetscape like Grandview Avenue or High Street in Clintonville, those buildings organically are different. This reads as one commercial strip center still.
Okay.
So I think you've got to break that up. I like the fact that you brought the people to the front. I'm, it's awfully close where the walkway is to the drive-through. Kind of would like to separate that out a little bit, so maybe we don't have people walking and cars going this way and people coming this way, and I think there's a little crux there. I appreciate you stepping it back. I think the more, and the more we can, anybody drives by this and sees activity in the front, the more apt that you're going to drive business here. But if it reads like a strip mall still, like a strip, you know, group of buildings, it's going to get drive-by, and people aren't going to stop. So you're just doing yourself more favors by enriching that streetscape feel. So I would, I would, I agree. I think you've got to, you've got to find a way to hide and bump up that height to give that a little bit more organic Grandview Avenue look, I guess.
Okay.
I think the drive-through works for me. I think that we have many abilities to, what if we allow golf carts?
Right.
What if we allow little, what if we have autonomous vehicles? We need to make room to be able to get things with wheels, but we don't want to do it to sacrifice the pedestrian. And you've offered pedestrian connectivity all through here, and I think that's wonderful. I don't know if that space in the middle of the parking lot has any use. I'm not sure. I'm not sure I'd want to sit there if it didn't have a cover over it. I mean, I just don't, I mean, I see why you put it there to try to impress us, but I don't know how you would use it. I'd rather see it maybe on the front, I guess, because, or somewhere that's closer to the building where you feel like you've got a reason to sit there. I wouldn't sit in the middle of a parking lot, but that's just me. So, you know, I'm for allowing, you know, a lower-height building. We have what we have. And I think that 161 in general, if everything was a loft building and a two-story building like the State Bank and that sort of thing, I don't think that we're going to increase pedestrian usefulness.
Right.
But you drive by Oakland Nursery, and there's a lot of activity there, and you see people, and there's stuff, and you know that that's something that you want to go to. So I think that you can bring energy here with this building. I just think that I would encourage a better architectural expression with your inspirational images, elevate the height some, variate, and really work those outdoor spaces.
Right. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fox. Mr. Way.
Thanks. I agree with the rest of the commissioners that, you know, I've actually spent a lot of time since the last meeting looking at the site, driving by it and driving the whole corridor. And I know that we have a vision for what that corridor could be, but it's a long-term vision, and it's going to take a while to get there. And to have parcels like this at kind of key locations just sitting there vacant just, to me, doesn't make sense. I think you have, have worked really hard at, the intent of, of the code is to bring activity to the street, and I think you're doing that. I'd like to see even more activity along that edge, if you could integrate it, but I think that you've addressed a lot of our issues, just a lot of the issues in general, to make this into a viable site and something that people want to go to. And I could now walk from Lowe's over to get a cup of coffee through the little park, and, which I can't do now. So I think this could be a real asset to that corner, and again, it's, you know, development changes over time, so 20 years from now, maybe there's something else there when everything else changes. So I think I support this.
Thank you, Kim.
Well, I'm going to bookend Mr. Grimes here for a minute. I appreciate that this is one tough parcel. Your deed restrictions don't help life. They, with the height restrictions, with square footage restrictions, every creative idea that you kind of hurt us softball from up here, it's, well, we can't because of either, the code doesn't support it, in which case, I think you heard support of, hey, let's entertain a hybrid. I think, you know, Ms. Fox pointed out, let's hybridize this. But this is asking a lot. So if I could pinpoint just a couple of items where my head is, and I'm doing concept kind of with a hybrid into the more detailed plans. Not super on board with the drive-through, not because it's a drive-through, I think drive-throughs are great, I used one right before I arrived at the meeting, but if I am at that tenancy space and I'm on the patio and I'm parked in where the 14 is next to that dumpster enclosure, path of least resistance, I'm going to walk through the drive-through line. Now, to add insult to injury, I happen to go when garbage collection is happening. And now, I run into the garbage truck, path of least resistance for the guy who needs to exit is, oh, oops, I was parked, I dropped somebody off at the eye doctor, and they're walking up, I'm already pointed in one direction, there's a drive-through line, and there's a dumpster, and I've just created a monster. There's a lot going on in a very small footprint by design, right? This is kind of the nature of the beast, it's the nature of this out parcel that's one of the last to develop. It's the leavings that's left over from the planned development. And then you have a little bit of a, let's stick it to you with, you can't have a bank on the parcel, and it can't be 7,000 square feet, and, and, and. I like the hybrid idea, but I'm wondering if we swing the other direction. We're looking at a staff report that says not, not recommended, not recommended, not recommended, not recommended. But the deed restrictions you mentioned before about going to Lowe's and saying, hey, will you waiver on the deed? And you mentioned before about going to, I think it was the bank, and saying, will you waiver on that? My hybrid is, can the city say, hey, we'd like to? Because, you know, there's money-changing hands, there's development that the city wants to see along 161, there's, there's winners and losers in every transaction, but can we hybrid it and say, hey, the city would really like to see this developed? Can, can we ask and say, hey, will you free up some of those deed restrictions? And then maybe it's not 7,000 square feet, maybe it's 8,500, and we can get the loft like Penn Zone, and we can get a little bit different. So I'm not there, and I see, you know, we talked in the beginning of the meeting, if you were listening, if you were here, about we get hung up in details. I am firmly hung up in those details right now, looking at, I agree with Ms. Fox, if you've been to other meetings, I'm sure you've heard her talk about gathering places. We love gathering places. In the middle of the parking lot, maybe not the gathering place, maybe incorporate on that plaza that's in the screen right now, that upper right-hand section, enlarge that and make that really a community gathering place, and use the center part for a few extra parking stalls. But we're trying to get that drive-through to play a little bit more of a role in the parcel. Concept plan, I could be on board with something that is, hey, it deviates from some of the Bridge Street code. So concept plan, I could probably get there because it's concept, because it's the Duplo blocks and not the Lego blocks. But as far as the preliminary, preliminary development, I'm not there.
We don't think we're there yet. We're not at preliminary. Sorry to interrupt.
No, 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 you're fine. All right. So looking back to the commission, any final comments? All right, we will do these items separately, so we will do concept plan first, and then we will have discussion on, and then move forward with a motion on development plan. Does that sound acceptable to the commission? Okay. I will entertain a motion for item one, to approve the concept plan.
Show move.
Thank you, Mr. Grimes. Do I have a second?
Second.
Whomever you want to give that to.
Could you put those conditions off? Could you put that?
Ms. Beal.
Mr. Schnir.
Yes.
Mr. Way.
Yes.
Ms. Fox.
Yes.
Ms. Call.
Yes.
Mr. Suplack.
Yes.
Mr. Grimes.
No.
All right. Now, item two, preliminary and final development plan. So I appreciate the comments before about, we don't think we're there yet. Also, the item before us is not just a preliminary, it is a final also, so I'd like to remind the commission, and then if we could put up, so if you could look at the, so I don't know where you were going as far as which conditions you wanted to put up.
I just wanted to see what we're looking, what we're voting on.
Got it.
So we need, here, we need a motion to...
Yeah, you'd make the motion in the affirmative, and then if you didn't want them to be allowed to combine the next two steps, then you vote no. And then they would have to come back with a preliminary and a final separately.
All right, do that again.
So just make the motion in the, like, to approve.
So motion to approve the combination of the preliminary development plan with the final development plan.
Got it.
And if you want them to be separated, then you would vote no.
Motion to approve preliminary development plan with final development plan.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Way.
Mr. Grimes.
No.
Mr. Suplack.
No.
Ms. Call.
No.
Ms. Fox.
No.
Mr. Way.
No.
Mr. Schnir.
No.
All right. Well, we appreciate that we're all in agreement. Just a question, do you seek any clarification from the commission, having heard what you heard this evening? Is there anything specific or anything that you'd like us?
We'll go from there. Thank you very much. I've been very cross.
Thank you. All right. Ladies and gentlemen, it looks like, thank you for your patience, it looks like the
Ladies and gentlemen, it looks like, thank you for your patience, it looks like the only public comment that we have signed up right now is for this next case. If there is anyone additional, we will also take public comment on later cases and appreciate your patience with us this evening. The next case is case three, 5274 Cos Gray Road, 21-142 CP concept plan. This application is a request for an informal review and feedback for a concept plan to develop approximately 101 acres consisting of single-family detached and single-family attached units. The development is divided into two sub-areas, one consisting of 160 acre, excuse me, 160 units, and the second consisting of 345 units with a gross density of five dwelling units per acre. The site is Zoned Rural District and is located east of Cos Gray Road, approximately 1,300 feet south of the intersection with Rings Road. Ms. Holt, welcome back.
Thank you, Ms. Call, and good evening, commissioners. This is 5274 Cos Gray Road. This is a concept plan request where the applicant seeks initial feedback for creating a planned unit development prior to a formal rezoning request. So the project would have to accomplish future steps two and three as shown, should it move forward. The site is in the southwest corner of the city. It's bounded by Cos Gray Road on the west and the CSX Railroad on the east, 1,300 feet southeast of Cos Gray and Rings Roads. It's just south of the Village of Amlin, and it's currently farmland and woods. The site is Zoned R Rural District, and it's adjacent to Washington Township and the City of Columbus in addition to the City of Dublin. These photos show the character of the site from Cos Gray Road and also from the City of Columbus along Myrick Road. With the analysis that we'd like to do tonight, we're going to start at the 30,000-foot level, if you will, with the Dublin Community Plan. The site is outlined in blue, and the Community Plan contemplates a mixed use, or I'm sorry, a mixed residential medium density shown in brown. And that means five dwelling units per acre as a gross density. It's a walkable type of neighborhood and built around a village scale. If we next examine the special area plan, and in this case, it's the Southwest Area Plan, Avery West Detail, that's more of the 15,000-foot view. And again, the site is outlined in blue for you. And this anticipates a Village of Amlin gateway with a mixed-use village center shown in red, a mixed residential medium density shown in brown on an alley-type of system, medium-density residential shown in yellow also on an alley-type system, mixed residential rural density in the south shown in light green, and that's at about 1.5 dwelling units per acre, open space on the east side, a 200-foot setback along the railroad, and then a 200-foot setback along Tuttle Crossing Boulevard. Next, we'll take a look at some transportation issues, and that's also a part of the long-range planning. So we're going to take a look at the thoroughfare plan from 2013, and this is another 30,000-foot view, if you will. This is very important to this site because Tuttle Crossing Boulevard is contemplated through this property. It's shown here as a 100-foot right-of-way in dashed green, and it takes a generally northwest angle through the property. And then completing the look at transportation, if we go to the Phase Two feasibility study for Tuttle Crossing Boulevard, this was dated from 2020, and this is the 5,000-foot view. It can be equated to a preliminary engineering study, providing more details beyond the 2013 thoroughfare plan. And this plan shows 116-foot right-of-way, allowing for shared-use paths and medians. It recommends a railroad overpass, and it shows an east-west alignment through the property with the right-of-way wholly on this project site. So moving to the applicant's proposal and looking at density first, there's 101 acres overall and a gross proposed density of five dwelling units per acre. There are two development pods proposed. The northern one is approximately 31 acres, excuse me, with 160 units that are detached single-family product. The southern pod is approximately 37 acres with 345 units proposed, and this would be a mix of detached and attached residential units. And by way of comparison, adjacent densities include Hayden Farms to the south at 4.9 dwelling units per acre, the Village of Amlin to the north at .53 dwelling units per acre, and then large lots in Washington Township on the west side at .25 dwelling units per The applicant's proposed layout of various elements include, on the north pod, the Village of Amlin directly to the north with two access points proposed, preservation of some of the tree rows and stands, a 100-foot setback along the railroad where 200 feet is recommended, a 100-foot setback along Cos Gray, and two access points along Cos Gray where only one is really likely to be approved. And then also showing is some access to the remnant parcels in the center. Tuttle Crossing Boulevard is shown half on this project site, contrary to the Phase Two study, which the city does not support. And additionally, the right-of-way is shown at 100 feet rather than the 116-foot right-of-way that was updated on the Phase Two study. And then moving on to the south pod, there's access shown from Tuttle Crossing Boulevard in two locations, access from Hayden Farms via three existing road stubs, the 100-foot setback along Cos Gray and the railroad, a 50-foot minimum setback along Tuttle Crossing Boulevard widening towards the east where 200 feet is recommended by our documents. These are the proposed elevations, showing the single-family detached condominium product on the left and the single-family detached product on the right. And then these are examples of proposed townhome products. So in conclusion, we have some discussion questions for the commission, and I'll run through these briefly. Is the proposal consistent with the Community Plan and the Special Area Plan? Is the commission supportive of the proposed density and the conceptual site layout? Does the commission support the development setbacks as shown? Is the commission supportive of the conceptual open-space locations, including preservation of natural features? Does the commission support the conceptual product types presented with the application? And then any other considerations by the commission? And with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Does the commission at this time have any questions for staff?
Actually, yes. Do you, the Community Plan in this area, I know you sort of showed us a small portion, but could we back out on that? Is that possible?
Not at this time, no.
Okay.
Mr. Way.
The proposed road has this really weird kink in it before it goes over the railroad tracks. I'm just curious, I mean, logically, you would keep the road going kind of in the same direction towards the roadway and then cross it at a right angle and then come back. And it just, is it trying to miss the wetlands or the woodlot? Or it just doesn't look like a logical kind of roadway configuration. It looks like somebody's trying to, if you go to the, actually, the plan with the purple on it, this one?
The applicant plan?
Yes. I mean, this one actually shows it probably correct in its alignment, but the applicant's plan shows it doing something funny. And I'm just curious, has there been any...
We'll let the applicant explain that.
Okay. I didn't know if the city would need that.
Any other questions for staff at this time? Is the applicant here? Hello. I made a comment to staff earlier that we were going to talk football tonight. So welcome, Mr. Underhill.
Thank you. Aaron Underhill here from Underhill &amp; Hodge at 8,000 Walton Parkway in New Albany, attorney for the applicant. With me is Greg Chilag of Edge and Paul Koppel, a principal of Schottenstein Homes. First thing I'll say is you need a taller microphone. Hopefully you can hear me okay. You know, I'm not going to steal Greg's thunder here because he's done the lion's share of the work, but I wanted to point out some things that, you know, are really impacting this site. And one of the reasons we have a bubble plan at this point is we really do want to get your input and feedback. You know, we're proposing here densities that really are maxing out what the Community Plan calls for. I have a feeling when we get down to really planning this site that it may very well be that we don't get to five, but we would like to, you know, be above four units an acre for sure. But we'll see what happens as we go through what is going to be a three-stage process, just like you've had with the previous application here. But in particular, we've got the railroad obviously impacting us. We've got a wooded area that is just above this future Tuttle Extension. We've got Tuttle Extension itself, and we've got the impact of existing development in the City of Columbus just to our south. So all of these things have really influenced our plan. Tuttle in particular is an interesting thing impacting the site. First of all, this is something that is not even in the city's capital budget. And if you see a more broader vicinity map here, you're going to see that this thing has to really come across country, across a lot of properties, and it's our feeling it's going to be, could be 10 years at least before this actually comes to be. So certainly, an exercise in careful planning to make sure that, you know, we can develop this site in a way that is responsible and good for an end result for us and a good development, but also accommodating the city's long-range plans, no matter when that might happen. So we have, we have shown a 100-foot right-of-way, you know, if it's 116 feet, I think, you know, we'll get there if that's the recommendation. We have shown the future extension that's straddling this property line. We were able to produce a letter from the property owner that would be impacted by that, who happens to be selling us this land, that he is certainly open to that conversation and acknowledges that we've done this. He and his family are at a stage in their life where they're not quite ready to move. I think they're maybe in their early 60s, but we believe in the coming years they will do that. Obviously, my client may be the obvious choice to come and say, do you want to buy this ground as well? But I wanted you to know that while he has not totally signed off on this yet, he has consented us going forward to get your feedback on that. And one of the reasons we've done that is that when you combine the right-of-way that's required with some of the setbacks required, you start really taking large chunks of this property and making them unusable for private purposes. And even with what we've proposed here, I believe we're at 8.5 acres of the site that are being used to accommodate the right-of-way and setback for that future street connection. So, you know, getting darn near close to 10% of the site just for that. You know, it impacts the site in other ways. We, you know, we think that the type of development that's going to want to exist right next to that, without that tree buffer on the north, which obviously provides a buffer to the northernmost development pod, but on the south, we think that the impact of that and the railroad tracks lends itself to a more dense development down there. And as we go up north, we would be getting into more of a village feel as recommended by the plan. We, when you look at what's going on in the south, this was part of what's called the City of Columbus's TND development that was kind of a trend back in the 2000s. Went and looked at the zoning today on that, and Greg did as well, and it allows about five, I think it's 5.1 units per acre down there. That's the density that you see, and I think going down to Hayden Run Road, we would estimate there are 1,200 to 1,400 homes. So we anticipate on the western edge of the southern portion of the property here, south of future Tuttle Extension, that we would do some of the cottage product that Schottenstein's Homes has been very successful with at Ballantre Woods. And as we go eastward, we would incorporate a townhome product. As we go northward and get into that pod up there, we have heard that the staff would like to see that develop in a manner that when Amlin, the Village of Amlin to the north would, you know, there's a lot of property up there that's under fractured ownership, but if that were to become a mixed-use area, that we could, it would feel integrated into that, and so more of a village feel with, we've heard alley, the term alley used, we actually are thinking about possibly incorporating a product that would have really a public street behind the units and allow many of the units, the majority of them, to front on open space and not on a public street, would allow rear-loaded garages that are detached. We could anticipate maybe some townhomes up there, but the large share of the development being that product I just described to you, and we think we have a lot of potential there to create something really special and different. As far as architecture goes, we have shown really character images and show you the type of quality we're looking for, and, you know, we understand the expectation here in Dublin. Schottenstein Homes does have a track record here with doing something that's been very well-received, both by the marketplace and we think in general by the community. And, you know, we, we're all ears on this, and our architect is George Acock and his son Mitch. We hope to have them here at a future meeting, but obviously, the Acocks' work speaks for itself, and that thing brings a lot of credibility to what we're going to do here. So with that, I know we're here to hear from you more than me. Greg and I will probably tag-team your questions, and I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Mr. Underhill. Looking back to the commission for questions for the applicant at this point in time.
I guess I'll ask my question again.
Yep.
So the alignment of Tuttle Crossing Boulevard, looks like it's varying from what was in the thoroughfare plan or whatever, the most recent plan. So I'm just curious why it's taking this kind of little wobble to the south.
I'm going to let Greg come up here and answer that, and we'll just make sure we understand the question I'm here. Sarah, would you be able to pull up graphic? The answer might be no again.
And Sarah, the other, the thoroughfare plan, the newest one, I think that shows an alignment that looks more reasonable. I'm just curious why there was a variation from it. Is our mic on?
Yeah. I think the mic's on. Here, there's a pointer. I don't know, you guys maybe can't see our pointer here, but trying to identify where it might be. Is it over there at the railroad tracks or before you get on our site?
That right there.
Yes. That is a function of a combination of a couple items. When we, our first look at the site, we were contemplating, based on the 2000, I don't know, I think 2013 thoroughfare alignment, which essentially sent Tuttle Crossing here around the woods and through this property. Ideally, we would like, ideally, we would like to continue to send our future roadway through that alignment. The current engineering study proposes it to basically come straight here. In our effort to minimize the amount of right-of-way and buffer that is on our site to give us some buildable zone down here on the south, and because we know we're not going to build a complete boulevard here at the initial phases of the project, our idea was to split that, split that boulevard along the property line and still maintain the location for the engineering study as it goes to the east of us, where it crosses the railroad and further east.
Okay.
That's, 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 that's the easy...
Again, the alignment's just, is nebulous at this point, probably. The other point I wanted to ask about that road is, so it's going over the railroad tracks, so it's upwards of 25 feet up in the air, and then it comes back down, so that will all be on embankment on both sides as it comes into the property?
Yes.
Do you have any idea about how far that embankment extends? Do you have any idea about how far that embankment extends?
We believe it's, at the highest point, it's probably 100 to 150 feet, and then it tapers down. So that's why we have a larger setback here. And we tried to get this as far away from the woods as we can, so the embankment doesn't affect the woods.
That's, that was the nature of my question. Were you moving it to the south to get it away from wetlands or woods or? Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for the applicant at this time? Any question for staff?
I want to, I kind of looked through the Tuttle Crossing study, and there were five alternatives. I thought I heard you mention, Sarah, that this one wasn't, there is alternative two that was recommended by the city. Is this in the position of alternative two?
Yes.
Okay.
Any final questions?
I'm sorry, to clarify, this, what is up in front of you on the screen is alternative two. And what doesn't meet, in staff's opinion, is where that right-of-way is landing on this piece of property and the right-of-way width.
Thank you, Ms. Holt. All right. I believe that we have, Mr. McLaughlin, are you here to speak? We welcome you and invite you up to the microphone. Please state your name and address for the record, and thank you again for your patience this evening.
Ed On, Ed On? Hi. My name is Bruce McLaughlin. I live at 5131 Brand Road, right up the street here in Dublin, 43017. My wife and I have lived here for 40 years. We put two kids through the Dublin Schools, five grandkids, so we are heavily invested in Dublin, and we love it here. I, along with a partner, own the ground directly across the street from this, 70 acres. It's a pretty significant piece, has all the frontage on Cosgray and all the frontage on Rings Road. So we just came here to talk to you about two things this evening. One would be utilities, and one would be roadways. As relates to utilities, we've been waiting a long, long time to see water and sewer come to us so we can begin to think about developing our ground. And we're great, we're very happy to see this proposal being made because we thought it might be another decade before it made its way up from Hayden Run. So what we would like to do is just make sure the planning commission knows that we are hoping that they will make sure that these developers size their utilities sufficiently so we can continue to bring them across the road. Whether you require them to do that, or whether we can work with you to make sure that we can help make that happen, we just want to make sure that, you know, there's a, I'm sure it's obvious to you, there's a bunch of us across the street on the west side that would like to continue development when it finally comes to us, and it looks like it might be coming now. So we just want to make sure that utilities are paramount question for sewer and water as you begin to allow this development to take place. And we would like to be part of that discussion when that discussion happens. Secondly, just have comments about roadways, and these are simply questions. It seems to me, it seems to us that the intersection of Rings Road and Cosgray is a pretty significant intersection. There's a lot of traffic coming through there. And I don't know, it's certainly not a part of these gentlemen's proposal. But as you look at it, I would recommend that somebody take a hard look at how you're going to deal with the Rings Road and Cosgray Road intersection over the long haul. I don't know if it needs a roundabout. I don't really know what it needs, but it's only Rings Road and Post and Hayden Run are the only avenues going westbound at this point, but for proposed Tuttle Crossing. So I just wanted to make that point that somebody should be looking at that, I think, in the context of going forward. And last but not least, I'm, I find myself amazed. I went to a presentation, must be three, four, or five years ago, where Tuttle Crossing Boulevard was supposed to be moved west from Wilcox up to Avery Road. The blueprints were there, everything was going to happen. It obviously hasn't happened. Now, when I look up and I see Tuttle Crossing coming across from the railroad tracks to Cosgray, I find myself scratching my heads trying to think, is Dublin actually going to allow the creation of a new Tuttle Crossing Boulevard at the west end without completing the park going back to Wilcox? And I, I mean, all I would, I'm just, I'm curious about the evolution of this road here as it relates to everything going east. And I just wonder if somehow you're going to resolve that and make it all work to some point here in the next three or four or five years. So that's everything I had, and no, nothing other than that. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McLaughlin. Mr. Hindershott, could I call on you for a moment? Could you just talk through the broad strokes of what the plans are as far as thoroughfare plans in the area? The last time we've done a study, what the, what the long-range vision is in response to Mr. McLaughlin, some of the very apt topics that he brought up?
Right. So providing sanitary and water access to this area of town is something that is tricky in engineering. We've been looking at for a long time. Specific to the site that we're looking at this evening, the sanitary access and the water access would come from the south, would be extended to the north as far as on the west side of Cosgray Road. That's something that we would have to further investigate.
And then as far as roadways go, can you speak to anything as far as the regional plans that have been addressed in the past? We heard about the 2013 alignment, the 2020 revision, and that sort of thing. Is there anything that you could speak to, broad strokes, as far as thoroughfare in the area?
Yes. So the thoroughfare plan shows the extension of Tuttle Crossing Boulevard extending to Hoochard, but my understanding is there isn't any additional studies or updates aside from the thoroughfare plan as far as what that alignment would look like.
And then as far as the Wilcox portion, was that covered in the same study?
Right. That's the Tuttle Crossing Boulevard Extension Phase One project, and we actually do have plans for that project. We just don't have funding for it.
Perfect. Well, thank you very much. We certainly appreciate your attention. I know that this is not the easiest area to solve, so thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. Any additional questions to piggyback on for either staff or the applicant at this point from the commission? Then we'll turn some time back over to Mr. Underhill before we... Oh, I apologize. I only have one name, so come on forward. Come forward. Please state your name and your address for the record.
Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to address the commissioners today. My name's Jody Zaranen. I live in Hayden Farms. I've lived there for 12 years, and we are the neighborhood, the Columbus neighborhood to the south of the property. My comments are completely in, to address the southern portion, the southern parcel. I encourage the developer to choose a home style and density that is more compatible with the existing Hayden Farms residences. We have free-standing homes in three sizes, cottage, carriage, and village homes. This development would be backing up to the least-dense-type properties, which are the village homes. I would ask the commission and the developer to explore an option of possibly annexing the south parcel to Columbus. This approach would establish more efficient delivery of public services and public safety. Once that Tuttle Crossing Boulevard and railroad overpass are done, it's going to basically create a little service island that will create inefficiencies and confusion. Also, the three stubs are going into the Columbus neighborhood, so you, you create a more cohesive system if you were to do this. Choosing this option would designate the new Tuttle Crossing Boulevard as the municipal line. I would like to acknowledge Sarah Holt for her thorough responses during my inquiries leading up to this meeting. Thank you for the opportunity to offer testimony on this proposal.
Thank you, Ms. Zaranen. And just so you know, Sarah also included your previous public comments into the public, into our packet prior to the meeting, so we certainly appreciate your being here and offering comment on this case.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Is there, is there a timeline for this? That's what our neighbors are asking.
So, Ms. Holt, do you want to talk through the timeline from concept, from where we are as far as the fastest it could go and the potential, seeing as the, in fact, Mr. Underhill, I'll probably turn some time over to you as far as what the timeline could look like, given the restrictions and the needs for this particular parcel?
And I'll go ahead and sit down.
Thank you, Ms. Zaranen.
Yes, I'll be happy to address that. And I also, just for my own remembrance, I have a letter to read into the record as well, from the public.
Thank you.
Yes. So we are at the first stage of a three-step process, and the timeline is by and large chosen by the applicant, and we, as the planning division, respond to that. Rezoning and a preliminary development plan could potentially take a number of months. It could take three months, start to finish. And that's if everything goes smoothly and all questions are answered fully, and we get a new application on the docket. That is also dependent on how the applicant feels about this meeting tonight, whether they decide to go forward or not. A final development plan and then final plating after that, that could take another three months. It could, it could be a little bit longer before we actually get legal lots ready to sell. And again, it's, it's hard for us to predict. A lot of it is driven by the applicant and how and when they come to apply to us.
Certainly. So I wanted to express that this is not the last time that this going, this is going to come before a public body. So it will come not just before the Planning and Zoning Commission, but it would also come before the City Council. And that would be multiple meetings at which the public would be invited to participate. And then from a developer perspective, we obviously want to look to the developer because they've done this before, and they've done this before in the city of Dublin. So their experience is also interesting because they understand the restrictions on each individual property and the type of application that they're bringing forward. So, Mr. Underhill, again, we're talking theoreticals.
Sure. Thank you very much. Well, we recognize as these things take time, there are multiple steps, multiple hearings. I wouldn't be surprised if we're sitting here at this time next year singing Christmas carols together and finishing this up. I don't think this, I don't think this project starts in 2022. It'll be at the earliest 2023.
Thank you, Mr. Underhill. We appreciate that. Mr. Way?
I have one more question, starting with Ms. Holt. Can you pull up the thoroughfare plan again? The most, the current, most current thoroughfare plan or the 2016 plan?
The Phase Two plan?
Yeah, the Phase Two, sorry. Too many names to remember.
There you go.
Right. So there was no contemplation in this plan of any kind of a north-south connection through this site? I'm just saying that for, to myself. So I was going to ask the applicant, had you considered any kind of north-south connection that connected A1 to B1?
We've absolutely considered that, and as these bubbles develop and we develop the products that fit within these bubbles, we will certainly take that into consideration, the connectivity between north and south.
So that's a desire of you? Right, thank you.
Recognizing we do have the tree area, and, you know, there'll be disturbance there, but, you know, that's one of the things initially we were like, well, we want to run something through there for that reason, but, you know, we're open to the discussion.
Thank you, Mr. Underhill. Any other questions? Ms. Holt, you have one more item of public comment?
Yes, I do, and thank you very much, Ms. Call. This is from Eric Whalen at 5325 Cosgray Road. And he writes, focusing on the proposed development for now, I object to this proposal as well as any other future proposals regarding land surrounding my property because I'm worried that the already horrible traffic will get much worse. And I also just don't really want a development built across from me, as there are already more than half a dozen housing options of all types and sizes within a half mile in any direction of this proposed development. I would prefer for it to stay farmland for as long as possible if it was up to me, or at the very least, something should be done to ease the traffic before building any additional housing in this area. And he lives just to the west across Cosgray.
Thank you, Ms. Holt. Any further comments before we?
No, I don't think so.
Enter into deliberation. Thank you, Mr. Underhill. All right. At this time, I'd like to turn the time over to the commission for discussion. Ms. Fox, do you want to start us off this evening?
Let's see. I'm not sure where to begin. I think most of all, the community plan speaks to a village concept. And, and I drove over and took a look today, and one of the things that I've come to understand as we've allowed more and more residential to develop is that we're reacting instead of being proactive about intentional types of development in these remaining partials that we have, especially out west. So the community plan talks about the village concept, and it also talks about the sensitivity of maintaining an aesthetic that likens this rural landscape. The development to the south in Columbus is very, very dense. And as I looked at what we've said yes to a little bit around the Ballantrey Woods and the cottages, we have started to move towards a very, very dense and less unique and timeless development. So right now, I don't think you fit the community plan. I don't think you meet the community plan in this village concept. The density on the site, to me, we've been looking at these five units per acre over a gross density. I think the intention of the plan is to look at breaking that density up so that we don't have, and I know you've tried to do that a little bit, but I think that we're getting the same look. If you're going to go to a PUD, I think that it has to be better than what our typical subdivision would allow. And I think that we have some protections there that make the development more unique because we are more attentive to the aesthetics of the open spaces, the curvilinear streets. We're starting to get a kind of a cookie-cutter look, and that's what I worry about. I'm very concerned Tuttle Crossing is going to be, as we've seen with Emerald Parkway, really, really important. And so at this point, not having the adequate setbacks, not really having that straightened out, I'm not, I'm not really feeling good about that. The product type, I think we talked about the conceptual product types. Once again, I think there are some unique housing options that are available that we're not seeing here in Dublin, but we're seeing everywhere else in the city. I think that we need to get back to something that's more unique, more village-centered, more sensitive to the rural environment and to the Amelin community. So I think right now, I'm not, I'm not feeling real comfortable with the concept plan.
Thank you, Ms. Fox. Mr. Schner?
This is going to be easy because I would just echo Ms. Fox's comments. This is tough in a way because we've been talking about sort of the, a village and different kinds of styles and sort of a more urban, walkable, yet this is, you know, very rural, or borders on very rural. So what really fits, you know, some little downtown-like development that's surrounded by farmland, which probably won't be farmland forever. Notwithstanding that, you know, the two words that just, my visceral response was cookie-cutter. It's a, it's a great opportunity to do something different. We've been, I think this, every person on this commission just wants to see something different than what we have seen in the past, that we, that makes Dublin what it made Dublin, but now we have a chance to move to the next level. So I would encourage, I, there's, I want to try to be constructive. There's very little that I saw here that I really sort of liked, recognizing it's a very high level. The, the building types, the, just, it's just sort of more of the same. So I'd encourage you to sort of maybe start with another clean sheet of paper.
Thank you, Mr. Schner. Mr. Way?
Yeah, I, again, I'm going to echo previous comments. For one, I think the density should be flipped, and I totally buy into the whole building off the village concept, but it should be up to the north. And I agree that there's, as we move out west, there's this opportunity to do something different. It doesn't have to look like stuff that's closer into the central part of Dublin. And I... central part of Dublin. And I think this site is kind of unique in that way, and that there's an opportunity to test some different products and to do it in a village type of way, which, you know, you can interpret that differently. But the stuff that I'm seeing here, I'm not seeing village in it yet. I think the character speaks to village, but I'm thinking about the layout, the density, and you talked about backing to the street, fronting to open space. You know, I think, yeah, okay, that's an interesting idea. Let's see more of that.
Thank you, Mr. Way. Mr. Grimes?
Thank you. I, too, similar comments to Ms. Fox and others. I think you can have a great chance to make this a really important property because of its having the tuttle crossing going through there. It's going to be a very desirable area with quick access back to the freeway and far beyond. So if I was worried about traffic in the area, having tuttle crossing come through there, it would be easier for me to buy a home there than, you know, another mile farther into the country eventually. So putting a unique product there along with its access to the highways and freeways and other amenities in the greater area, and the village of Amlin, I think there's opportunities to connect into creating that node there. You know, people may want to more identify with Amlin as a way of saying, yeah, I live over near Amlin. Well, that's going to be a feature that you may want to tie into and feature for your neighborhoods. However you get across the tracks, I don't know, but it's going to be part of that community. So I think that's something that you should think of carefully when you figure out what kind of product you want and looking at its long range and resale of those products that you do build. So, yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Grimes. Mr. Suplack?
I concur pretty much with all of my fellow commissioners. There's, I think, it's a hard, one, it's a hard site, two, it's a hard, it's a hard plan to react to because it really is pretty limited in what it's actually articulating at this point in the development process. I think it's also difficult to recognize that there is this master plan, and you guys might be the first piece of it, right? So you're out there before, and anything else potentially is sort of energizing it, including, obviously, hayden run, I'm sorry, tuttle crossing coming across. So there's a lot of discomfort around all of that. I'm going to go through, and, you know, if we're just articulating our response to the discussion questions, I think clearly in that it's not consistent with the community plan, the special area plan. I would agree with Mr. Way on the density, that I feel like the density has to be well-considered relative to said special area plan. And I recognize you're trying to mitigate the density that's coming up from the south and, right, balancing that. So there's definitely considerations to make there. I do not, at this point, support reducing the desired setbacks. That's one of those, that's one of those things that, short of having a good reason to do it, I'm inclined to leave them as they are, as they're desired. Conceptual open space, again, probably similar sort of comment. It's hard to discern. Generally, it's always good, if we have very natural preserves, to continue to try and preserve them, but at what point does that impede the design, the design and desired plan that we want? So it's always a balancing act in that regard, and of course, it's at best a bubble diagram at this point. The products, fellow commissioners said it well, there's, you have quite a few, quite a few images. A large portion of them are out there en masse, which makes them less agreeable, right? Would prefer to be on a different path there. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Suplack. I'll round this out. It was entertaining to me. I dealt with an Edge Homes out west quite a bit in my former life and had to look them up because your website is slightly different. So I was thinking it was a piece of home. But I echo a lot of my fellow commissioners. My knee-jerk reaction is density, that, you know, quick napkin math. I understand it's five dwelling units per acre, but that's the gross number. Just taking out the open space, it turns into 1.664. So that's, you can't go bigger than 0.15 acres on average across, and that's not even taken out roadways. So that, that's my knee-jerk. However, looking at the community plan and specifically focusing on the village commentation, you know, that commentary around village, I don't necessarily, especially in this area, think that the, I, I'll speak for myself currently, I don't think we're opposed to a little bit more intensity and density here, so long as it meets that village feel. So I reflected on the communities that we have along Highland Croy, where we have Corazon. We have apartment buildings that blend nicely into a village product that then blend nicely into the open space, that frankly blend nicely into acre parcels, and it's all part of a village, and it works well. You have some of the items that Mr. Way was talking about as far as the opportunities, those non-alley, but, you know, fronting on park rather than fronting on public streets. You have a blank canvas and you have 100 acres to paint. And so, we appreciate partnering with you on bringing something to fruition that would be not just something that we would be proud of, but a linchpin for future development to make a new corridor of Dublin. We talked about different gateways. This is another gateway into Dublin. It happens to be from the south, which doesn't get a lot of focus from Dublin because there hasn't been a lot of development in that particular area. But I certainly think that we have opportunity, and to use our football analogy we've used many times at other meetings, we're in the game.
All right, okay, good. May I respond briefly? I know you've got other things on your agenda.
Just looking back to the commission before I, okay, Mr. Underhill?
Certainly appreciate the feedback. Obviously, we're disappointed not to get a little more support. I hear support for some density done correctly, different product type. I am a little unsure about what different product means. Is that a difference in the market we're trying to hit? Is it, for instance, would you entertain apartments if done properly here? I know that's typically been a bad word in Dublin, no offense, except in Bridge Street, but is that, I mean, what does that mean, different product, if you could expand upon that?
If I can speak for one, I would not entertain 100 acres of apartments by any stretch.
Right.
But an apartment building surrounded by some lower density, surrounded by a mixed-use piece of property, I could get on board with that. And again, we have 100 acres to kind of paint here. So I'm one of seven, and we need to count to four. So I'd like to turn over to other commission members. Would that be something that would be entertained?
You know, I think there's always a benefit to mixed housing styles. I think what I worry about is I drive through that area of Dublin, it's all starting to look the same. And it doesn't have a flavor that people live there, but there's no energy within these developments. They're simply houses stacked upon houses stacked upon houses. The village concept gives us the opportunity to have a lifestyle within that 100 acres. So if you come up with a plan that mixes housing styles but creates a place that's enjoyable to walk through and walk around or walk over to Amlin to get a pizza, you know, if the next, and I see that it's possible that the next partial to the north might develop, you have that way, that connectivity to be able to get there, you can begin to utilize this village concept. I think we're just getting tired of seeing the same product everywhere without any sense of uniqueness or timelessness to it. So, I mean, I don't know how else to put it, but that's how I feel.
And I think on the northern part, we're definitely on the same page as you, and it's difficult to describe in words, and I know we didn't provide you much to react to other than those words on that. I think the southern piece, we have a little bit of disagreement, and that's really going to be the struggle for us. But we'll look at it, and I think if we could introduce an element of multi-family down there, that would help us certainly, because we think the constraints with a four-lane street eventually and all the other things going on down there, that we need to get a little creative on the private side in terms of making it economically viable. But I appreciate those comments.
Ms. Fox?
Just one more thing. When you separate, when we talk about a variety of housing, it's not that an apartment building isn't attractive. It's the context of where it sits and what you have to offer around it, you know? So I think that it's always this partnership of the landscape that surrounds it, the streetscape that surrounds it, and the building itself. So.
Fair enough. And we also want to be mindful of, you know, Oak Park's on your agenda tonight, and I was actually a part of Oak Park 18 years ago or whenever it was, and I didn't know what I was doing then. But, you know, we also don't want to be too much of a pioneer either and get it wrong to where we see something not develop and we're talking about it 15, 18 years later. And so, you know, we'll take your comments into consideration. We certainly, we may be willing to get creative. We don't stick our necks out too far, though.
Thank you, Mr. Underhill. Mr. Suplack, did you have?
I forget now.
All right. Well, Mr. Underhill, thank you. It's always a pleasure to meet with you, and if you have any further questions, please feel free to reach out to staff. They can direct it to us.
I actually, forgive me, I came back to it. So, relative to, we didn't discuss it because I don't think it's our purview, but relative to Jody's commentary, right, there was a lot of good foundation for this. Just generally reaction, where that, where the cities are bifurcated there and where all the services are bifurcated is not a bad, bad conversation to have. In what forum has that had?
All right. So, all of the land that's part of this application is currently already part of the city of Dublin. The city of Dublin obtains its water and sewer infrastructure through an agreement with the city of Columbus. So, any of that would be in the purview of that agreement, which ultimately is a city council question.
And things like fire services, is that, that's in a township that overlays and would
Right. Fire service, fire service is Washington Township, and generally, there are mutual aid agreements where whoever, whatever agency happens to be closest to a fire at the time it's called, in terms of their personnel, they come and deal with it. Police services would continue to be provided by the city of Dublin, as this is in Dublin's corporate area, but also, as needed, there are mutual aid agreements among municipalities. So, it's not at all uncommon, especially with the growth of central Ohio, for there to be many places where Columbus and other suburban communities butt up against each other geographically, but blending, or I shouldn't even say blending, but having the ability to kind of back each other up along those edges is also common.
Thank you.
Ms. Call, I just have one more thing.
Yes, Mr. Underhill.
You know, one of the problems with this new street coming through here is the sheer size of it. And I just want to point out that, you know, some relief on these setbacks when we come back would be appreciated. And I'm not saying they need to be 50 feet necessarily, but if you look at 116 footer right away, 200 foot on either side, that's 516 feet. And by my math, that's 171 yards, almost two football fields.
Thank you for that, Mr. Underhill. We needed a chuckle this evening.
Well played, sir.
All right. Looking to the commission, we have three additional cases, two of which we're hearing together this evening. Would the commission be supportive of moving cases five and six ahead of case four, as I believe we have residents in the audience for cases five and six, seeing head nods? With that being said, cases five and six will be heard together. These cases are Oak Park Subarea F at 7050 and 7055 Oak Park Boulevard, 20-192 FDP Final Development Plan. This application is a request for development of 12 single-family lots on a 3.47 acre site, excuse me, site-zoned planned unit development district, Oak Park Area Subarea F. The site is located west of Highland Croy Road, approximately 700 feet southwest at the intersection with Brand Road. Case six, Oak Park Subarea F at 7050 and 7055 Oak Park Boulevard, 20-193 Final Plat. This application is a request for the subdivision of a 3.47 acre parcel to establish 12 single-family lots. The site is owned planned unit development district, Oak Park Area Subarea F, and is located west of Highland Croy Road, approximately 700 feet southwest of the intersection with Brand Road. And Mr. Ridge, you have our case presentation this evening. Welcome, welcome.
Great, and good evening. As was mentioned, this is a request for review and approval of a final development plan and associated final plat for the facilitation of 12 single-family lots in the Oak Park neighborhood. So highlighted in yellow on your screen is the site in question. It is approximately three and a half acres in size and is located southwest of the intersection of Highland Croy Road with Brand Road. The site is currently undeveloped and contains no significant natural features. A bit of neighborhood history. This area was originally rezoned from our rural district to PUD in 2006. The single-family residential components were approved via a final development plan in 2007. In 2017, Subarea D, which is the kind of C-shaped subarea on this map here, was rezoned in 2017, which allowed a single-family residential in place of town home units. And then in 2019, the applicant submitted a concept plan for rezoning of this portion in question this evening. And so, in a bit more detail regarding this case in particular, again, this came before the Planning and Zoning Commission in August of 2019 as a concept plan, and then, again, as a rezoning preliminary development plan and preliminary plat in December of 2019. It was approved with five conditions on the preliminary development plan at that time and three conditions on the preliminary plat. These conditions largely addressed minor updates to both items as well as items like tree replacements. At this point, all of those conditions have been satisfied. The rezoning preliminary development plan and preliminary plat moved on to city council in February of 2020. Based on discussion at that time, the plan was actually revised to remove the open spaces. And then in May and June, the revised or amended rezoning preliminary development plan and preliminary plat went back to council for first and second hearings. At the second hearing, these were approved with seven conditions. So these conditions largely addressed maintenance schedule for the private drives, updating the declarations to reflect the rezoning conditions, timing of turnover of the HOA as well as the condition of the roadways at the time of turnover, and then the deeding of Oak Tree Drive north and south to the city. The law director's office has reviewed these and has determined that the conditions that can be satisfied up until this point have been satisfied by the applicant. So this graphic shows the ownership and maintenance responsibilities of the roadways and reserves. On the left is as it exists today, and then on the right is what's proposed. So the primary difference here is highlighted in red on your screen, and you'll see that Oak Tree Drive north and south, including the bulbs, will become public streets when deeded to the city of Dublin. Regarding the final development plan details, this is largely consistent with the preliminary development plan. The proposals for 12 single-family lots on approximately three and a half acres, the city council approved development text requires front yard setbacks be a minimum of 20 feet, side yard setbacks a minimum of six feet. side yard setbacks a minimum of six feet, and rear yard setbacks a minimum of 15 feet. Lot coverage for the eight smaller lots shown, outlined in blue, is 60%, which is consistent with the remainder of Oak Park. And then the four large lots here are actually larger than the average lot found throughout the neighborhood, and lot coverage for those four in particular is 45%. The architecture in this sub-area is consistent with the rest of the development, which intended to replicate an English or Irish garden theme. Exterior materials are the same as the rest of the neighborhood, so stone, brick, and stucco, four-sided architecture is also required, and 50% of the homes in this sub-area are required to have a red roof. And then the associated final plat, as shown on your screen, again, contains 12 lots. These vary from .17 acre in size to .37 acres in size and are a minimum of 55 feet in width and 130 feet in depth. So these were reviewed against all applicable criteria, and staff is recommending approval this evening of both applications. The final plat with one condition, that any minor technical modifications be made prior to submission to city council, and then for the final development plan, that the applicant continue to work with staff to ensure the combined mail unit box is appropriately located, and that the applicant continue to work with engineering to demonstrate compliance with stormwater management requirements as defined in Chapter 53. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions you all may have. The applicant is also in attendance this evening, and then I think we do have neighbors in attendance as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ridge. Looking to the commission for questions for staff at this time. No questions? Mr. Way.
I'm probably way, way too late in asking this question, but I have to ask it. Was there ever any consideration in having the units face Oak Tree Drive as opposed to, I mean, face it in the sense of putting the garages in the back on another lane?
So, I'm sorry, can you repeat that question? You said face Oak Tree Drive?
Driveways are not on Oak Tree Drive, but you actually create another lane in the back and they would have rear access. Was that ever considered, or?
That was not considered when looking at a single-family development for this area, no.
And, so, okay, so I have one follow-up question to that. So the, the unit on the, whatever, the left of this drawing has its, is basically the garages accessed off the lane, that, that corner lot, and I get the other one on the other corner to the right is not, and I wondered why that was, and it's actually a better condition for the, it's pulling the driveway further back from the intersection.
Yeah, and this is purely illustrative. This could change.
So, right, so they're not, that's just, okay.
Mm-hmm.
That's a comment, anyway.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Way. Thank you, Mr. Ridge. Welcome. Do you have a statement that you'd like to make to the commission before we, you know, entertain you with our questions?
Well, I certainly can. As Mr. Ridge mentioned, one of the conditions of the rezoning was the inclusion of certain items in their declarations associated with the subdivision, as well as creation of special, or additional operating assessments and a segregated fund for the future maintenance of that, of those remaining private drives. In my review of those, the applicant has complied with those conditions, and so the remaining considerations for the commission this evening are typical to final development plan review.
Thank you, Mr. Fox.
Thank you very much. I'm Chris Klein, attorney with Heinz, Kessler, Myers &amp; Postelakis in Worthington, although for the last year, my law office has been here in Dublin, in the garret, in my third floor of my house, fairly typical for lawyers these days. With me here tonight is Linda Minery from EMHNT. She is our planner and has a significantly higher level of technical expertise to read the, the final development plan drawings, should you have questions that she could, she could best answer. This, tonight, the final development plan and the final plat, we're past the point of discretion. The layout has been determined, it's been approved by city council. There was sausage-making in the most sincere use of the term that got us to having that approval from the city council, and the, some, some of, some of you, you were involved in that, and certainly staff was, was heavily involved in that. It's a fairly lengthy and painful process, and I think all, all that were involved in it would, would agree with that, with that description. Be that as it may, we are here tonight simply to implement what was approved by city council on the final development plan and on the final plat, and the staff reports have said that that's appropriate, and that approval is appropriate, and we're obviously aren't going to argue with that fact. From my perspective, the work that I had to do was to, to implement those seven conditions which dealt with the, the, the maintenance of the remaining private roads, and there's not going to be very much left in terms of private roads. I did write, at Chase's request, a narrative letter that was in your packet, that I did my best to, in sort of plain English, to explain how the, how the process worked. And the long and the short of it is that, that, that there were seven conditions of approval by city council, and we agreed with those conditions. And the sort of unique thing about the way that process worked is, as I said in my, the letter that I wrote, the, the way that business works between private land use restrictions and zoning is that traditionally and typically municipalities say hands-off, because that comment was made earlier, with respect to deed restrictions, and municipalities do not get involved in enforcement or even review or discussion of private land use restrictions, and that municipalities confine their efforts to zoning as their form of land regulation, and the developers provide their regulation of, of land with, with deed restrictions. In this case, we had this tough nut to crack, and that was that we had this commercial property, and it was going to, had things worked out like was planned, which probably was not a very good plan, that commercial property was going to help contribute to the maintenance of these private streets. And when we were able to convert that commercial property into residential and get that albatross around the, off the necks of both the residents and the developer, then that begged the question of what about the contribution that that commercial property was going to make to the, to the continued maintenance and repair of these, of these private streets, which were part of the subdivision. And by the way, these streets are all in, everything is there, people have been driving on them and thinking they're public streets since, I don't know, 2000, 2009, something like that, when, when they were built. And so, so what happened, as I described in the letter, was that the, the developers said, "Look, I understand that these, these major streets in the front here are going to have a future burden on the subdivision, and I will contribute $25,000 for the future upkeep of those roads." And it's possible to crunch these numbers and, and see how they work, because you can figure out about what things cost and the intervals that things will be done." And that was with the assumption that they were going to stay private streets. Well, the way these discussions and the meetings went on, it came to a point where the city changed its position and said, "You know what? Maybe we can take those, those private streets over and make them public streets." And, and we said, "Well, that's a great idea." And then I got my arm twisted, and Dana said, "Well, look, about that 25 grand that you were going to contribute for the private streets, I want you to still kick in that 25,000, and then it can go towards a fund for maintaining the private streets that'll be left over." And we agreed to that. And so I've got that check for the $25,000, which I will deposit with the homeowners' association, the Oak Park Civic Association, Inc., once this project is, is finally, finally approved. And, and my agreement with Mr. Boggs is he's going to certify when the appeal period is done, and that's when we'll, we'll hand that, hand that money over. So anyway, the, that was part of the deal, the 25,000, to go into this special account for maintenance of basically the alleys at the rear of these, of the, of the, of the rear of the villas and at the rear of some of the, the single-family homes. The other part of it is that, that, and obviously Dana and Paul Hammersmith were at the heart of this, but the, they said, "The other part of it is, and this is where the deed restrictions come in," deed covenants means the same thing, covenant of restriction, it's all the same, same concept, "that, that these new lots, these 32 new lots, and 20 of them were not part of this, this rezoning." That you can overlook things like that when you're amongst friends and trying to solve a problem, and we agreed to allow those, those properties to be burdened too. But that all these 32 lots, the 20 villa lots that have the rear entrance to the, to the homes, and the 12 new lots would, would be assessed by, by, through the vehicle of the, of amending the deed restrictions, the covenants for Oak Park to provide an extra assessment on top of the, I think it's about $90 that the residents are paying now. So these lots would pay that 90 plus another $12.25. And the way that was arrived at was that we crunched our numbers and said, "Look, you know, this is our forecast for what it's going to cost to maintain these alleys over, over time, through infinity, so to speak." And we came up with a number and submitted it to Paul Hammersmith, and Paul said, "That looks good, but I want to have a margin of error." So he raised another two bucks, another $2. So that's how we got to $12.25. And so that is the number that city council approved. Now, we have taken all of those seven conditions, and they are in fact incorporated into the, the amended covenants for, for Oak Park, along with a lot of other changes that we made, because we, we did away with two subareas, the commercial and the townhomes, and we brought two new subareas in, the villas and these 12 single-family lots, and I don't know whether, you've been furnished with a copy, the signed copy of those amended covenants, but they have been signed and they are ready to record. We can't record them until the plat is recorded, and that's, we'll move that as fast as we can. There are some, sort of like poking a turtle with a safety pin, it's only going to go so fast, and so we'll make that go as fast as we can, but there are processes that we can't control. So bottom line, as I stand here tonight, I believe that we've done everything that we were required to do, the conditions have all been satisfied, and we, we would respectfully request that, that this body agree with, agree with me on that point. And I'll be glad to answer, and Linda, any, any questions that you've got of us.
Thank you. We appreciate your time. Looking to the commission for any questions for the applicant at this time. Seeing none, is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak to this application? Seeing none. We will go into conversation, discussion from the commission perspective. Anybody on the edge of their seat? I'm singing, head shakes, and I see three of them. Mr. Supalak, any comments?
No. How about this? It might be a question for staff, and just confirming, right, we weren't, we weren't privy to all those conversations, we're, we're being told everything's right and agreed upon.
They have, they have complied with the conditions of the rezoning with respect to the declarations.
Got it.
So everything that you're looking at is typical now to final development plan.
Yep.
Ms. Fox.
And the only thing that I'll, that I'll say is because some of us, some of the commissioners weren't here for, for some of this, is that it was a, and we thank you for this, it was a lot of sausage-making, that is true, but it was an effort that, that the residents who lived in Oak Park brought forward their concerns. Mr. Close and the developer worked very hard to try to address those concerns and to reduce the cost of maintaining roadways in this development, and that, Mr. Way, is why you probably don't see more roadways. But I appreciate that, and, and yes, they've, yeah, it's been a long process and they have completed it.
Wonderful. All right. I have two motions that we're entertaining this evening. Could I have you present, Mr. Ridge, on motion number one, the final development plan, those two conditions? They're flipped, I apologize. I, I have, anyhow, I will entertain a motion to approve the final development plan with the two conditions listed on the screen.
So move.
Thank you, Ms.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Way. Ms. Beal.
Mr. Schneier.
Yes.
Mr. Way.
Yes.
Ms. Fox.
Yes.
Mr. Supalak.
Yes.
Ms. Call.
Yes.
Mr. Grimes.
Yes.
And I will entertain a second motion to recommend approval to city council for the final plat with a single condition, again, as depicted on the screen.
So move.
Thank you, Mr. Grimes. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Way. Ms. Beal.
Mr. Supalak.
Yes.
Mr. Grimes.
Yes.
Ms. Call.
Yes.
Ms. Fox.
Yes.
Mr. Way.
Yes.
Mr. Schneier.
Yes.
Thank you very much, and, and we're glad to be past the sausage-making. Thank you for your time. All right. The last item on our agenda this evening is mobility hub, Dublin Recreation Center at 5600 Post Road, 21-181 INF, informal review. This application is a request for an informal review of a non-binding, and non-binding feedback for the construction of a mobility hub located at the Dublin Community Rec Center. The 56.81 acre site is zone PUD, sorry, Planned Unit District, Development District, Kaufman Park, and is located north of the intersection of Kaufman Park Drive with Post Road. Hello, Ms. Mullinex, how are you?
I'm good, thank you. Good evening. This is a request for an informal review for a proposed mobility hub located at the Dublin Community Rec Center. Tonight, I will be co-presenting with JM Rayburn. He are a planner in the city's Transportation and Mobility Division, where he will provide an overview of the mobility hub implementation in the city.
All right. Thank you, Taylor. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for saving the best case for last, and also for the opportunity to share a little about, a little bit about the Dublin Mobility Study. This is a multi-year, multi-phase effort that began in 2017. There was a large public workshop that was used to gather feedback and guidance from the community on where they'd like the city to focus expanding mobility and how we can support the community's evolving mobility needs, whether it be the workforce, those aging in place, other residents, and then visitors to their community. From that, from the initial, from, and let me back up, from the beginning phases, we were able to carve out strategic mobility priority, priority areas. They're on the screen now, micro-transit with the Dublin Connector Shuttle, shared micro-mobility, which is a fancy way of saying bike sharing scooters, concepts for mobility hubs, secondary wayfinding on shared use paths, and then completing smart streets, which is evolving into a Vision Zero effort. You may ask yourself, what is a mobility hub? It's still quite conceptual in our region. It is a space designated to co-locate multiple modes of transportation, and they serve as a transfer point between these different modes. So they can live by themselves, but we can connect them intentionally, and the intent of this is to, one, raise the quality of life, whether it be mobility independence for those who can't drive or have other impediments to driving, but also to support the workforce in first and last mile connections. It's important to note that these can serve as a landmark, particularly for those who are visiting, and it can help them orient themselves in the community. We believe with the mobility hubs, if we can program them and, with, in the right space, with the right modes, it can also lead to lesser dependence on the automobile. So we're looking for a mode shift in the community, particularly for the workforce, a 1% mode shift from those who are driving by themselves to using shared transportation. In particular with the DRCRC or the Dublin Community Recreation Center Mobility Hub, we have met with Public Services Committee on a number of occasions, and we have indicated that this site is ripe for a shuttle shelter, as well as a docked bike share and micro-mobility Speaking on Public Services feedback over the past couple meetings, they are supportive, or the committee, the committee is supportive of mobility hubs, particularly at the pilot locations, which I'll dive into a little bit more. They're excited about the possibility. They're excited about the possibility of future mobility hub locations. We initially had phase one with three sites selected, but through feedback with the Public Services Committee, we've added a fourth one. And what you'll see as I get into is that each of these sites have a different theme associated with them. That can be recreation, it can be food, it can be knowledge and information, but also office revitalization. From the specific amenities that we heard from the Public Services Committee, there is a desire to have internet connectivity at each hub, in the form of Wi-Fi hotspot. The hubs are to be aesthetically attractive and also contemporary in nature. We would like to provide equitable access to mobility options and expand those at the same time, with the hope of increasing public health if we have more active transportation. Particularly with the Dublin Community Recreation Centre, it was offered an idea of a small video screen or kiosk that can have an educational video on loop, that also have opportunities to call different modes of transportation, and this is the hopes of making life a little bit easier for those who use it, particularly in the setting that's focused next to the senior lounge of the community center. And placemaking is very important as we look at these mobility hubs, particularly in the context that they're located in, and combining that with what the zoning says for that location and other guidelines that are applicable. Dublin staff has identified approximately 15 to 20 proposed locations for mobility hubs in Dublin. The four locations that are being prioritized in ideal areas are to introduce the concept. So I said before, if you look at the screen, those that are in orange are the Dublin Community Recreation Centre, we have Franz Road in Metro Place North for office revitalization, the Dublin Library Parking Garage for those who are seeking information or knowledge or what have you, and then the North Market Bridge Park is the other fourth site as part of this phase one. And then that's, this is the, just focusing on those four locations. And you'll see that the rec center is the one that is, the one that is to the upper left, sorry, I had a moment there, it's been a long evening. As we think about the timeline, it's very important to state that we have an idea, or we were planning to do designs for the first four mobility hubs next year, and we have money allocated for that purpose. We did pursue an AARP grant at the national level. We were not chosen in June for that national level, but we heard in August from the Ohio level of AARP that they're going to select our project, and that would be to support a accessible shelter at the rec center adjacent to the senior lounge, incorporating an ADA compliant ramp, as well as some other enhancements and features. They initially wanted us to finish this by the end of the year, which was not feasible, so we negotiated to have this project completed by July 30th of next year, and that puts us on a pretty aggressive timeline that is doable, but we also want to stress that we'll have very succinct check-ins with bodies, including this one. So after we have this informal review, we will go to the Public Services Committee in January and ask for their feedback and share what you have shared with us in terms of feedback and any comments. We will then come before you again in February for a determination for this project, and then we're hoping that we can have the final design finished and finalized by the end of February and issue bids and construction process after that. So we want to begin construction in May and have it done by that deadline of July 30th. And it's important to note that this grant was meant to be part of the livable communities program, which stresses quick build projects that are not ongoing, but something we can knock out within a year. And so that's why this project was a great candidate for that funding, and we were able to get $20,000, which is the most they typically issue. So I think that was great for the city. And I'll turn it over to Taylor for the rest.
Thank you, JM. So this evening, the commission is providing non-binding feedback for this informal review of the proposed mobility hub. This application will come back to the commission, as JM just mentioned, for determination on the amended final development plan, which will occur in February of 2022. So the site here is highlighted in yellow and is located north of the intersection of Kaufman Park Drive and Post Road. The site contains the Dublin Community Rec Center and is located within Kaufman Park. The site also contains the city of the Dublin Development Building, the Kaufman Homestead, and suburban residential areas, which are just northeast and west of the area, and the site is Zoned Plan Unit Development District Kaufman Park. This is the proposed project area, where the mobility hub will be located adjacent to the senior lounge on the north-facing facade of the Dublin Community Rec Center. These are the existing conditions of the project area for the proposed mobility hub. The project location was selected based on the proximity to the senior lounge, which is an expanded area of the recreation center, and contains dedicated services associated with our aged population. Again, the project is highlighted here in yellow. Since 1995, there have been multiple amended final development plans for site modifications, which include the Dublin Community Rec Center expansion, which happened to include the senior lounge. And then in addition, there are two bocce ball courts that were approved in 2005, which are just south of the proposed project area. The bocce ball courts are anticipated to become an outdoor space for yoga and other group activity space, so that's just for your awareness. This location was selected as the inaugural mobility hub due to its proximity to the senior lounge, ridership data from the Dublin Connector Shuttle, and favorable feedback from the Public Services Committee. So this evening's request is to seek non-binding feedback for a mobility hub that is currently in the conceptual design phase and working toward detailed design. The proposed site map highlights various proposed mobility hub facilities, which include a shelter highlighted here in yellow, an ADA compliant ramp highlighted in purple, and a new sidewalk, relocated bike racks, bike share station, and dockless parking for e-scooters highlighted in pink. The mobility hub also includes additional features, and Dublin Mobility Study classifies this mobility hub type as a campus and community center type. Included in your packet are conceptual inspirational images of mobility hub shelters. Staff is recommending materials such as wood, glass, or stone, because the materials closely align with those used in the Dublin Community Rec Center, which are the exterior materials that are indicated in the Kaufman Park Master Development Plan. The images here include natural materials, which are traditional to Dublin. And lastly, planning recommends the commission provides informal review and feedback to the applicant on the proposed application. I do want to mention, after further discussion, staff has revised the discussion questions, specifically questions one and two, to provide more clarity in tonight's discussion. So one, is the commission supportive of how the mobility modes for the Dublin Community Rec Center Mobility Hub are shown? Two, is the commission supportive of the proposed amenities the Dublin Community Rec Center Mobility Hub offers? And what architectural style of the mobility hub shelter does the commission support? Is the commission supportive of the proposed shelter materials, which may include stone, wood, or glass? And does the commission feel that the proposed mobility hub shelter design should take design cues from the existing Dublin Community Rec Center building, or stand out in its design and proposed materials, and of course, other considerations by the commission? So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that the commission has. The applicant is also in attendance, and the consultant is also in attendance, and they have a presentation they would like to give this evening.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Mullenix. So I'd like to invite the applicant up, or the consultant up, to give a presentation as they would like. I believe that we would, I think it would behoove us to do questions and conversation, discussion together this evening on this item, as I think that we're going to have a lot of fun with this one. So welcome, we invite you to the microphone. Please state your name and your address for the record.
Hello, Commissioners, good evening. My name is Justin Robbins. I live at 428 West College Street, Granville, Ohio. And again, with the HDR, and we're the consultant that's assisting with city staff in the development, concepts, and final design for the mobility hub. I think a majority of the content that we have in the beginning slides was already covered by JM, so we might want to go ahead and go to the, yeah. So in trying to understand the way in this site can lay out, we took a look at what was there and what we're connecting to. And there's three primary areas that we're looking at, and the first is the building, obviously, the community center. The second is the parking. And the third is our larger context of the multi-use trail. So those are really the three elements that we're looking at, in addition to things like transit and some of the modes that potentially could be incorporated into this design. If you go to the next slide. So the original concept included the bicycles and shared cycles located to the east, and so that's the yellow node that you see, and it's a short distance to the multi-use trail. The purple or the pink node that you see under Shelter, the star there, that's basically connecting transit stop to the building, and you can see there's a bit of a distance between those two areas. And so a situation like this, you would have the bikes that aren't provided any coverage, they're open to the elements, whether it's private or whether it's a shared bicycle. And we took a look to see if there's a different way that we can incorporate this. Again, it's kind of changing the site layout a little bit, and if you go to the next slide, JM, you can see, or Taylor rather. If we move those bikes a little bit closer to our mobility hub, we can have something a little more integrated, so when you get off from your transit vehicle, or if you come in from a bicycle or shared bike, you have instant access to any of the amenities that are there. And it's a bit closer to the building as well. So one of the things we might recommend is starting to explore how those can be a little bit better integrated with the shelter, and whether or not there's opportunities to kind of rethink that design a little bit and make it a little more compact, like I say, integrated. One of the issues that we did find is that the sidewalk, I think it's around six feet in that area, it's a little bit compressed between a fire hydrant and an existing light pole. And you can see the multi-use trail that's to the east is, I think, an eight-foot trail. So whether or not that's within Dublin code, we got to take a look and double-check, but we might have to widen the sidewalk a little bit, or provide another opportunity to get to and from, or are we going to use the sidewalk that's there for bikes? The other thing we took a look at, and one of the constraints of this project is obviously schedule, and then budget is another one. So we're looking at this as kind of incorporating pre-designed structural elements into a more customized approach on the site. So we did look at transit shelters, and we did look at ones that are available, commercially available, that potentially we could get within a shorter timeframe. One of the issues that we saw with this is this being kind of the first mobility hub that Dublin is going to be pursuing, we want to make sure it's iconic and kind of reflective of the larger program. The question came up is whether or not an off-the-shelf transit shelter kind of does that job. It's an open question, it's one that I don't necessarily have an answer to, but at the end of the day, if this reads as a transit shelter, you know, it's typically a glass box or a structure that has people waiting inside of it, and that might not necessarily be the way forward that is best for this concept. So we started to think a little bit outside of that, and here's examples where we're looking at shelters that are more of a node, right? It's kind of an object in the landscape, and it reads as a transit shelter. It does provide a lot of the amenities, I think, that people expect within a transit waiting area, seating and Wi-Fi and public amenities, things like that. Taking another look, though, if you go to the next slide, if we start to think about this a little bit more linearly, and again, trying to use off-the-shelf components as much as we can, but thinking about this more as a line or an edge, a canopy that's open, that allows a little more flexibility with the space underneath, provides more opportunity for things like placemaking and gathering space, and doesn't necessarily read so much as a transit waiting area, but more becomes the front porch of the building, that just so happens to also be a place that incorporates all these different modes and transfer areas. So the purple area, the pink area, that you can see, the dash line that we have, this, again, this is very, very high-level concepts about how something like this could be laid out, doesn't necessarily have to attach to the building, probably recommend a little bit of space there. But it could be a way for us to incorporate that public space that has movable furniture, that has a place for people to sit and wait, that's a little bit more comfortable than your standard transit shelter. And then in the yellow, you can see that we can incorporate now modes underneath that as well. That could be something more like covered bicycle parking, or we have the flexibility to change what that is and to expand what that is as the time comes. So these are the kind of two areas that we're going back and forth with, again, kind of utilizing off-the-shelf components as much as we can. And if you can see on the next slide, here's an example of what that potentially could be. These are covered walkways that utilize kind of warm wood underneath, you can put lighting in there, things like that, and then we can start to incorporate some of the materials that you can see in the building. I think there's limestone that's available there. Some of the colors can be carried through as well, but again, that's one of the questions or one of the main points of feedback that we were looking for in terms of direction is, do we want to mimic what's there in the building, or kind of take cues from some of those design elements and incorporate them in a little bit, but have this be something that is a little bit separate and reads a little bit different than the architecture that's currently there? So those are the ends of the slides that I had, and hopefully we can have a good discussion. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Robbins. All right, we'll do questions and discussions at the same time. So Mr. Schneer, do you want to start us off?
I'll start off with a question. I'm sure there were budgetary concerns, et cetera, but was there any thought to having a restroom as a part of this, or is it close enough to the rec center that it would be, that would be the purpose? I'm thinking of getting off of a bike or whatever.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you for your question. So no restroom at this time is being considered with the mobility hub, but there are restrooms just inside the rec center that are in close proximity.
My comment is, I think it's great to be, trying to be constructive. I wouldn't comment on which modes, when I'm going through those, because I defer to all the expertises been presented here, or the amenities other than the suggestion of a restroom, which I understand. Personally, I think the design should not mimic the existing building, and if we're really asking for personal opinions, I fear towards very contemporary, so, you know, I would vote on the contemporary side and make it really stand out and make it look, you know, iconic, iconic in a non-Irish Dublin way, for a change.
Thank you, Mr. Schneer. Ms. Fox?
Well, JM knows I'm excited about this, and I think you're meeting all the, as I read about this, I sit on Public Services, so we've had a conversation about this. The mobility modes, I think, one, and we've talked about this, I think it's really important that this particular mobility hub addresses the people that will be using them, and many of them are seniors, right? So it has to be comfortable, and it has to be sheltered, and it has to meet their need. So it's not just about the bikes. It's a great place to park the bikes, I don't know how many are going to hop on them, I hope they do, but the mobility hubs should be able to address in the future the vision that we have, that there'll be many other ways that seniors will use mobility. And so this has to do all those things. So the amenities have to be able to incorporate the ability to accommodate other kinds of things besides the bike and the share. As for the architectural style, you know, I like the idea that you mentioned that it is a front porch, it's front porch to the rec center, and it is kind of the backside of the rec centers, it doesn't have much flair. I don't, I agree with Lance, I don't think it has to look like the rec center, but I think it has to make the rec center look better from its design. And I would hate to see you have anything that looks like a freaking bus stop. So, you know, I kind of liked the one image that you showed with some swings, it's not enclosed, but I think moving towards something that a senior feels embraced by with a fresh look is good. I think that you should be able to visually be able to see that yard in the back, because I think that could connect it and make it seem even more appealing, because it's a space that feels happy and good and safe. The other thing that I wanted to mention is, I think each of the mobility hubs should have a different feel for wherever you place them, they should speak to the context of the environment around them. I think that it should be an opportunity to provide amenity to a senior that they wouldn't be able to get somewhere else, so that first and last mile. So if someone drops them off, they should be able to get home. I mean, you know, and it should be informational. I like the idea for seniors- I like the idea for seniors, you have to be really careful about these video screens, because they don't know how to use them, right? And so, so I know some of us do. And some of us don't. But I'm just saying, make sure that the informational aspect of this is multi-user friendly. Because a kid could go up there and go da-da-da-da, and a senior would go up there and have to grab a kid to do that, you know? So, and I think it's also important here, this is a good opportunity for wayfinding. So, I mean, obviously, it's not just going to be seniors who use it. It's going to be kids that use it, it's going to be a lot of people use it. So I think that's really important. I'm excited about it, so I don't know if I've given you all the information I need, but... Oh, no green roofs, no green roofs. And the reason for that is because every green roof we put in here, nobody ever maintains them. Or can, or has to replace them. And I can tell you that our parks people just don't want to do it. So, no green roof.
Thank you, Ms. Fox. And I'm going to deviate from my norm, I'm just going to keep going. So I'll make some comments, and then I'll let Mr. Way round us out. I think this is cool. I think this is fun. And I think this provides us opportunity to be very creative when it comes to how these evolve throughout the city. I'd love for, you know, we're talking about this one, and it's right outside the senior center, but it's also a nice placemaking, wayfinding. So wouldn't it be nice if we talked about bicycle parking, and it could be adjacent to our bicycle parking? But, and I'm shooting from the hip here, so this is by no stretch my recommendation of this one needs to look like. But imagine, you know, the 15-year-old saying, hey, I'll meet you by the Tardis. Something that is placemaking and everything. We could be eclectic with these mobility hubs around the city. If we're looking at them holistically, that they could all create their own character. You know, they could take cues off of their environment, or they could stand out from their environment and almost be an art piece. And they don't have to be super costly to be an art piece. We're erecting a structure anyway, why not make it a little bit creative? Now, I'll step back from that portion and hit on some specifics. I think especially outside of the rec center. I think we have some opportunity here because of the clientele that we think that this will be lending itself to. I think incorporating a little free library. Or incorporating, you know, we have some seniors who would love to go on the paths, like in Trébue, and look at that little house, but don't have the mobility to do it. So if we had a history telling, you know, that was on a loop screen that just told a story where you don't need to interact with it, or you could, if you wanted to select certain stories, that just tells the history and shows them the dancing bunnies, and shows them the corn hinge, and that sort of thing, sorry, field of corn. Shows them all of these different features that maybe they can't get to on their own. But can we bring those items to them and help them really feel part of why we all love Dublin? We love Dublin because we go out and we walk dairy fields, and we go on the hunt to find all the little eclectic items hidden off on the trailways. Well, maybe they're not mobile enough to do that. Can we bring that enjoyment to them? And I think that we have the opportunity to do that with some of these mobility hubs, and I think it's just a cool idea. Let's bring all of those different modes of transportation all in one place. I think you hit the nail on the head with where to start outside this particular portion of the city. So thank you very much for all of your efforts, all of them, in bringing this forward. Mr. Sublack?
Same, not a bus stop. We lose if it's a bus stop. All different, yes, yes, and yes. This is a great opportunity, right, to have great follies at each one, right? So we all, everyone's head nodding to the same on that. Placemaking, I think, is a good way to think about it, right? If it's not a bus stop and it's not actually a mobility hub, but it's like a, you're making a plaza, right? And I don't have to be there to catch a bus, but I just want to hang out, right? So that comes with certain things. Obviously, we can sit here and talk about, you know, the swings are, the hanging swings are fun. That's an amenity. I really like the library idea in this thing, right? My kids and wife walk around and they pull books out of those and give books to those all the time. So that coming and going, right? So amenities integrated in artistic architecture. And I don't necessarily mean art as much as artistic architecture type of thing, like an installation that way, although art could work into this too. And I really like where you were going with, think of it, them as potentially informational pieces, i.e. museum-ish pieces about Dublin. And I'm not so fond of the touchscreen. I mean, maybe we could do the touchscreen, maybe not. But in all of these, where there's a wall with wood slats on it, and boy, if I don't want to like laser a map of Dublin onto that, right? Like, so it's doing a similar type of thing and calling out these nodes you can get to. And, right, there's lots of opportunities in all this, all these materials to do things like that and think that way, as long as we're thinking about sort of making it an informational museum-y kind of piece. And then all of a sudden, that becomes a thing where, yeah, we got to go visit all of them, Dad, right?
Wild and crazy. I love the idea, I love the concept, I love what you're doing. The amenities, sure, whatever you could put in there, that's great. Architectural style, I, well, some of the, what you had offered in the slides, to me, was reminiscent of the structure on the east end of the bridge, the pedestrian bridge, similar styles. Maybe I feel like I'm a little old-school if I say, well, why don't we make them all look similar materials, is that? And then people say, oh, that's what I'm looking for, because they see it. It's not, is that an art piece, or is that a place I want to go to, or both? I don't know, you know? But it could go either way. But I'm saying, if you're going to be thematic, we already have a structure that's a principal hub, or node, or place at the end of the bridge. You know, people identify that as, that's where I want to go. Maybe you want to use some elements of that through the process, and then have an opportunity for art or other things to combine with it. So I'm sure there's going to be a lot of folks that'll offer a lot of opinions on that. So I'm all for it, good luck.
Thank you for taking on my most favorite unloved space in Dublin. This is on my morning walk, every morning I walk right by here. That fire hydrant drives me nuts because I have to walk around it. So if you could move that and the light and clean that up, I would be so happy. I think this is absolutely the right place to do something. It needed something. The bocce courts just didn't have enough volume to really create some activity. But I think you should have a vision for all of this space. And I'm saying the space going back, and even as it slides in front of the senior center, along the front of the building, think about all of that. And you're just doing phase one, right? But how does that all tie in? I think this could be a really exciting little corner. Because once you move away from it, everything just drops off. And it's a couple of old people walking around the park. So I think there's some really excitement on the bigger idea. So in terms of the elements that you're including, I think, you know, you're on the right track. I think there's an opportunity here. I mean, you guys are, you're taking on mobility, right, for Dublin. This is the opportunity to brand mobility. So this could be the first step in a brand that, and it doesn't have to repeat exactly all through the city, but it should be something that's like a little beacon, like, oh, there's a mobility hub. And it's kind of like, you know, like birdseed across the city, right? You can follow the mobility hubs. And then I was, you know, there's this whole sustainability thing that we've been talking about as a commission. So do you incorporate solar in a canopy? I mean, what are the things that you could integrate from that standpoint to power it, if it needs power? And then I thought, well, jeez, it's next to a fitness center. Could you bring fitness out? So somebody could come out, wait for the mobility whatever to come, and they get on a treadmill and they actually generate electricity to watch something on a screen or whatever. Anyway, so just another idea. And I have to say that this is a broken little corner, because the driveway, the road that comes into, the road that accesses the rec center has a really weird kind of configuration to it. And it's actually, people come in and they just turn into the rec center, and they don't look to see the cars are coming the other way. And the way the road kind of has this weird curvature to, there could be an opportunity to straighten it out, the road that runs in front of the rec center. And if you straightened it out and brought it into whatever, Downpatrick, it actually might give you a space then for vehicles to actually get out of the travelway and pause, and cars can still go by. So, you know, that's something you should think about. And, you know, I've watched it for 20 years, and I've seen some really bad behavior there. So in terms of cars coming and going. That's what I've got. I think it's exciting, go for it. It shouldn't look like the rec center at all. Please don't do that. It needs to be, and it's back to this branding, the mobility hub, and that should stand out wherever. But I think you, obviously, there's a contextual part of it. So you always have to look at the context and try to incorporate that in some form or fashion. Think big. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Way. Did you have any questions or seek any additional clarification from the commission at this point in time?
No, I think the main component that we wanted feedback on was the architecture of the structure, just because that would influence everything that follows in our decisions, you know, in February. If the consultant has any, you know, additional questions, go at it. Justin, if you want to chime in?
I don't have any questions, but one idea I posed to Jam was a stationary bike where people can get on and generate power from that that powers other things on the site, which would be fun. Neither here nor there. No, no questions.
I just want to be clear, that is kind of like a COSI museum now, all of a sudden. So now you've got the museum box checked. Get your green energy and your fitness right there, all in one.
All you have to do is take one of those GoCo bikes and put them up on a rack. Turn the thing on and just sit there and, you know, you don't have to take it anywhere. You just drop your quarter in there and just sit there and pedal on it, right? I mean, what's, there you go.
Well, you know, when we had Lime Bikes, there was a Lime Bike station right there. So it's been a mobility hub for years.
Yeah, just sit it up there. I thought your idea about, I just kind of sketch that. Your idea of straightening out the road gives you a lot more space to play with on a fun little diagonal, too.
Timing is an issue.
Oh, yeah.
Well, I mean, it's phased, right? You start with something...
Phase it, yeah.
Yeah.
But you have to move the fire hydrant.
It's kind of cool. Well, Jam's visionary, he'll figure this out. Between the two of you, you ought to rock this one out of the park.
Well, we certainly appreciate the application, the discussion, the movement in this direction. And I know it's not typically a planning and zoning commission, but good job on the grant. So a little golf clap for you there. So, thank you very much. These are the fun things we get to do, and it was cherry on the top tonight. It was probably the whole Sunday. So thank you very much for all of your diligence in bringing this forward. And again, we look forward to seeing it back February. Wonderful, yes. All right. Well, ladies and gentlemen, that is the last of our cases this evening. Do we have any communications?
I only have two things. One, thank you guys for a great year. We really, obviously, enjoy working with you and making great things happen. And tonight was no exception. So thank you for all your hard work and dedication. Appreciate that. I know it's, you're volunteering your time here, so, and it's definitely appreciated. So, and then on that appreciation note, just a reminder that Greg Peterson is no longer a councilperson after the end of the year here. So he will be having a reception, or will be hosting a reception for him next Thursday night here in Council Chamber. So I know we should have all been included in that, but just want to remind you to come and wish him well on his next adventure. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Roush. Any communications from the commission?
I do, just from council. The last meeting we had, we had Highland Glen come forward to council, and the density was just, it was a tough one. And council is very concerned about these setbacks, these narrow setbacks and lock coverage and lack of ability to have patios. And they really, really want the Planning and Zoning Commission to come back with recommendations on these design guidelines. And we're just going to keep seeing them come down the pike here. One of the things that I look back on is that with these PUDs, if you don't get a better product than what you get with a traditional subdivision, then, you know, why are we doing it? Why are we giving it away? I took a drive around today to take a look at what is being developed. And we're not burying the frontage. We're just, these houses are lining up straight across. I looked at the swales, at the cottages at Ballantrae. I just drove over there and took a look. And we just literally have a streetscape that's about as monotonous as you can get. And in the back, I saw the patios that people were getting. They were getting a little six-by-six patio, because there's nothing else they can have. So if we're really going to propose that we want a lifestyle for the people that live in these, we've got to start creating the lifestyle around these. And we've got to start really being, we've got to get to it, I guess, is what I'm saying. And I think it's really important. And council's asking for that. I just think it's going to have to come here from this commission to decide what the citizens want to live, you know, what their surroundings going to look like. So it was not a happy meeting, I guess I would say. They were really bothered by the fact that there was no patio space. And had to change things on the fly. So I bring that to you because I think it's important for you to hear, and I think that it's work that we can do, and I know we can handle it. So, other than that, I thank all of you. This has been the best commission group ever. I so enjoyed. No, 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 this is a fabulous group. And I've really enjoyed the conversation, the respectfulness, the dialogue, the variety of opinions that you have, and the ideas you come to the table are just amazingly great. And I am honored to be sitting up here with you.
Along those same lines, the feedback from council, I'd love to get workshop time on the docket. I know our agendas are packed, but we've talked about doing setbacks that are not five-foot. We've talked about a six, eight split, or a total of 14, you know, whatever those look like. We've talked about that. We've talked about open space being usable, congregated open space. You know, my napkin math tonight, we had an application that was, hey, it's a gross five units per acre, but it's 6.64 units per acre, not including streets. You take streets out, it's probably close to seven and a half, 7.75 units per acre. So understanding what we're getting, because a lot of us think, three units per acre? Oh, that's third-acre lots. It's not third-acre lots. Three units per acre is quarter-acre lots, if you're lucky. And so when we're doing those translations, being able to speak the same language, being able to look at a product, whether it's Ballantrae or any other development, and say, ooh, I know what that translates to on paper, so that when the paper comes before us, we know what neighborhood it's closest to. And just having a workshop that allows us to say, okay, well, given, you know, we have history, Mr. Way, you're the newest on the commission, and you've seen quite a few of these already. So, you know, what were the problems we had with Highland Glen? And what's the biggest bang for our buck? We're seeing an issue with density. We're seeing an issue with the same monotonous product on every lot. We're seeing no undulation. We're seeing straight roads. We're seeing all the things that council is concerned with and the broad strokes of what we need to design. But can we workshop it and say, okay, well, we're going to pound out the first three in quarter one, then the next three in quarter two, and just execute according to a workshop plan? I think maybe in our best interest.
We need a pattern book, too. We need a visual that says, if you approve these setbacks, here's what it's going to look like. And that's easy to put together, because the built product's out there. And if we could just say, oh, my gosh, that's what I'm approving? That might give us a different opinion. So a pattern book would be great.
Well, and even dumb things. When we look at lot lines, we look at side setbacks. Are the air conditioning units going to be in the side yard? If that's a zero lot line, we know what that translates to, but can we visually see it? Can we look at a product that looks like that? We drive around the city and we pat ourselves on the back for some products. We look at the funeral home that's down the street and go, man, that turned into a great project. But did they actually do what they were entitled to do? Most often, it's not. Most often, they didn't take advantage of what that application, you know, early on said, okay, you can have this density, you can have this parking, you can have, they didn't take advantage of it. Now, especially those residential properties, they're taking full advantage of what they can do. So do we need to change what those standards are?
And this ties in, I think, really nicely to what Sarah presented to you all a couple of weeks ago, in, almost just said September, in November, and the opportunity to sort of meet with you one-on-one and get these ideas out. And then I think that really helps inform in a workshop session. And I think we can really crank this out here at the beginning of the year, beginning of the year, because we're going to have some agenda space we've been planning out, and we can definitely, now we have time to sort of accommodate that, knowing we can plan ahead. So I think we can definitely get to this here in the beginning of the year, and get, make sure everybody's happy, and we're making progress on this topic, so, thank you.
Meeting adjourned. Thank you, everybody.